Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome to the May 11th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calvers County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, can you read off the closed-session agenda items? Are we reporting out from last time? Go ahead, let's start out by reporting out, excuse me.
Closed session from April 27th, 2021. Item 1, Public Employment Pursuant to Government Code 54657B1. Titles: County Administrative Officer, Planning Director. Board action: No reportable action. Item 2, Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. Conference with Legal Counsel, Re-Anticipated Litigation, One Case. Significant Exposure to Litigation. Board action: No reportable action.
Thank you.
Closed sessions for today, May 11th. Item 1, Conference with Real Property Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code 54956.8 Regarding Price and Terms of Payment for the Following Properties Effective by the State Route 4 Wagon Trail Realignment Project, Phase 1. County Negotiators are Robert Packenger and Matt Satow. Properties: Tuscornea Ranches LP, APNs. 053001018, 053001019, 053007011, 053007031, 053001032, and 053008060. Item 2, Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. Conference with Legal Counsel, Re-Anticipated Litigation, One Case. Significant Exposure to Litigation. Item 3, Pursuant to Government Code 54957.6. Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiator Judy Hawkins Regarding Unrepresented Employees.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would like to give the public the opportunity to make a comment on any one or all of the closed-session items. You know, you can take it down during your comment. Thank you, Mr. Tuscornea.
First thing first, I'd like to introduce myself. Name's Cole Tuscornea. I'm a general partner with Tuscornea Ranches. First thing, I'd like to thank Board Chair Stoppa and the rest of the board members for giving us this opportunity to speak today. And a special thanks to Supervisor Follendorf. In the summer 2019, obviously, this all has to do with the wagon trail realignment. In the summer 2019, in Amador County, I had a meeting with Director Pack. That was my first meeting regarding the wagon trail. And in the summer of 2020, Tuscornea Ranches was notified via text message that there was going to be a full, complete written offer to the ranch. Before the offer, before we reviewed the offer, I made it very clear that our number one concern was access and about how bad the ranch was going to be affected. In the following months, there was numerous other meetings with dock and engineering and public works, with a public works representative at the meetings. My number one requests were replacements of existing access points for the ranch to operate the cattle business. Several meetings, and in the fall of 2020, we received another revised offer, 10/30/2020. It was very hard. It was a serious trust issue. It was very hard to negotiate in good faith with eminent domain hanging over our head the whole time. During the RON hearing, Mr. Pack stated that there would probably never be, there would probably never be resolved because it was all about money with Tuscornea Ranches. As far as we're concerned, that is not factual. We never mentioned money at one time at any point in negotiations. So basically, Tuscornea Ranches and myself did not have trust in the county or the eminent domain process, and was perfectly fine to bring our case in front of Judge Sanders. Then Tuscornea Ranches hired a law firm from out of the area and hired a new engineering firm, Diablo Engineering. Vice Chair Follendorf has met with me on numerous occasions, and I feel like there's been movement and good talks, and we've made progress. And that's about all I have to say at this time. I'd like to turn it over to my engineer, Garrett Greitz with Diablo Engineering. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Garrett Greitz. I'm with Diablo Engineering Group. I'm a licensed engineer in California, and for over 30 years, I've done public improvement projects mostly on roadways, and a lot of the projects have been on the state highway I entered the picture in January of 2021. Tuscornea Ranches hired me, and I had an early-on meeting with Robert Packenger, and over since January, I've had eight meetings that have been very productive. I would like to report today, the good news is that the county and Tuscornea Ranches have executed a stipulation of order of prejudgment possession, and that was executed last week. But in this document, there still is work to be done. So the document specifically says that the parties have met to discuss additional proposed mitigation measures from the owner's claim that this proceeding, and that the parties will meet by June 11th to discuss these items as part of a global settlement. And in particular, that forecasted meeting and any results of that meeting are not contingent by the county securing possession in order to achieve the funding goals for the project. And on behalf of the ranch, the ranch is supportive of the project, the community benefit for the project, and as Cole said, is that foundational is ranch operations and access is fundamental to the challenges that we would like to continue our discussions about. From my, I'd like to share some perspectives from myself since I'm late to this discussion and effort. My observations early on were that improvements were needed to effectively communicate, and that, I'm saying that from both sides. I also want to emphasize that there's a fundamental need to understand the issues, and I observed from both sides that there were misunderstandings, misinterpretations that led to disingenuous hypothesis. But recently, we have had very productive communications and understandings of issues have been improved on these important issues. So access, ranch access and ranch operations. As I said, I showed up late. In a very short period of time, I was able to communicate very effectively with the county's engineering team, the management team, and the ranch operations. I listened to the record of necessity, the RON hearing, and if you listen to it, it really comes across as the county did all the things that they needed to do and all the things that were necessary. But then I sit down and talk with Cole, and I see from an engineering perspective, the impacts, the negative impacts that would happen to ranch operations and access. So more work needed to be done. Tuscornea Ranch wants access and operational issues addressed, and I think many of us know that there have been highway operation improvements over the years adjacent to the ranch, and those projects have not gone very well. And this is an opportunity for us to have the plans and the specifications, the contract with the contractor, address specific issues so that things can go much more smoothly than they have on previous projects. I would like to commend the county team for addressing and solving access gate issues during construction as an important aspect of how the ranch could sign the stipulation last week. We sat down when I first started in January and started talking about, well, what happens when all the fences go up to secure the new right-of-way? Where are the gates? How does the ranch operation activity take place? How, where, what restrictions on the contractor are going to be put into place so that the ranch operation can happen during construction? And those answers were not readily available, but the team was working on them, and we've been sitting down and going through those items to solve them. And that, so what we're, the milestone that we've reached is primary is how gates are going to be provided when the contractor's out there trying to construct and get the job done as quickly as possible. There are challenges that from modifying the design plans and specifications might not be attainable, and it certainly could end up being that the only mitigation is from a financial standpoint. So the ranch specifically wants to note that the primary purpose, it has been and continues to be that can we solve problems by changing plans and specifications in the contract rather than compensation? I also talked a little bit about understanding the fundamental issues. At this juncture, it might not be productive. I've mentioned that we've had good conversations, but I want the board members to understand that how we got here and that the, you know, Cole specifically mentioned this morning that he received a text message on the first offer, and the process that led up to the first offer and the second offer could have been improved. And it might not, I want to share a couple of things, is that the first order of work in those first two offers were to talk about the subject property, the right-of-way needed for the road, and that includes the easements, the temporary construction easements, and the roadway right-of-way. And specifically, that the first order of work is that the county would secure that right-of-way, put up a fence, and that drawing doesn't show any gates, how access to and from. So several of the parcels would be isolated from access during construction and also So my point on this is that if Tuscornea Ranches would have signed one of those first two documents, they would have given away the ability to access the gate during construction, the gates during construction. Now, we have since worked really hard to mitigate that, and that, I'm using it as an example of some of the other issues that we have. We want that same type of collaboration and coordination. Currently, and one of these other issues, is that the first and second offer specifically identifies the acquisition of real property that Tuscornea Ranch owns. 7.533 acres in the appraisal, in the appraiser says, the county's appraiser assesses that as $0 for 7.533 acres. And the logic apparently is, is that that land is currently occupied by the existing state highway, so it has a zero value. And I personally don't think that that is justified because this is an eminent domain, and you, the government can't just come take something for free. So that's kind of set the stage of you present an offer, and by the way, we want to purchase 76 acres, but for 7.5, you get nothing. And I'm pretty sure that the ranch is current on their property taxes, and they've owned that property for five generations. The eminent domain action also takes access denial. So that term is, if you can picture that there's an acquisition and where the property line is, is that there's a vertical barrier, and the barrier indicates that you cannot cross that with a vehicle, a person, it's literally a barrier. And typically, in my experience, when the acquisition occurs, is that's a separate parcel. That's a right that is being taken away, purchased from the property owner. The appraiser, the appraisal the county provided gives no value to the access denial. An important aspect of that is that the ranch didn't know the term access denial or taking access rights until I entered the picture. So I explained it to the partners and how the offer, the two offers have been presented, and that that fundamental concept was not explicitly explained to the ranch. Since we have made strides in having access points provided, we don't believe them to be large enough for what we need, and we want to continue to have some conversations about where those access points are. But a portion of that is the ranch, the family, has made certain business decisions within the family for legacy ranch planning, and taking away the access rights puts a burden on those long family legacy planning strategies. And that emotion was prevalent in, and not, you know, effectively communicated to the negotiating teams, but here today, we're able to explain that that's part of the emotions behind the challenges, is that it was interfering. Another point on this is that when Caltrans exercised the opportunity for the pool station project and they acquired land from the ranch, is access denial was not secured. It was never explained before because it wasn't necessary. So this project is taking the access, but on the pool station project, it wasn't necessary from, apparently from Caltrans's perspective. So the expectations are Tuscornea Ranch has some important details that they want to take care of before the construction contract gets let out. Family members have had experience, and it's been detrimental to ranch operations because the contractor was doing things that nobody expected them to do. We're very hopeful that we can solve those issues now. In particular items that we still have on the table to talk about are driveway and gate access, specifically ranch operations post-construction. Interior vehicle trails and roads is that the ranch has operated for many, many years. There's been certain access points, and the project will be moving those access points to different locations. And so there's some work on the private property side in order to reestablish access points to the new access points. We have three portions of the ranch that are isolated, so when, once the project starts construction and then the community is still using the existing highway, there's three parcels that are isolated that really can't be used for ranch operations anymore. So they're orphaned parcels. We have a need for accessing natural spring water during construction, is that a very reliable water source is in one of these isolated parcels. So in August, when we need water, is that it's isolated between the construction and the existing highway. And we've offered a solution to that. It's just part of the cost-to-cure options to try and provide mitigation for that condition. We also want to talk about fencing throughout construction, and the team has made significant strides to address that for us, but we have some more work to do on that. We currently have fire breaks and permanent fencing, and we need to, in the after condition, once construction is completed, is have the fire breaks reestablished and addressing the permanent fencing. And then we also have three orphaned parcels that don't have any access onto the highway, and we would like to get those mitigated by some means. And those are the ends of my remarks.
Thank you very much for making your time and to come in here and make your remarks. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, are there further public comments?
Yes, we have Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you. Can we hear you now?
You hear me?
Yes.
There we go. I tried several times. Now, here I am. Yeah, thanks to the ranch for coming forward. That was very informative. Something that he said kind of hit home with me, and that was that Mr. Pack, when he was with the county, told them that it's, with you folks, it's all about money. Well, with everybody, it's all about money. Money's how we quantify time, and time and, you know, property as well. So I would, everything that they've said is reasonable. Get this, you know, get this off your hands quickly as possible by doing what they ask. Now, I'd like to get on to the next item, item two. Is that be okay with you? Can you hear me?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. Item 2, Significant Exposure to Litigation. I'd like to remind board members that anything they say, anything that a county employee might say, it can, you can be held, the county can be held responsible for. So be very careful in your words. Things cut back to people. They know what you're saying, and eventually, that can be, that can end up in a, being, being turned into a situation that can cost the county money. Significant exposure to litigation, it's always there. Be very, very careful. I'd like to thank you for your time, and yeah, going to closed session, folks. Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Any further public comment, Madam Clerk?
There's no further public comment.
With that, we'll be adjourning to closed session. Welcome back to the May 11th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calvers County Board of Supervisors. We will be continuing closed session at the end of the day. Are we going to report out for yesterday's closed session, Madam Clerk? Okay, okay, we'll continue that to the next time. With that, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Do we have leased the Medina out there? Not today?
I think so.
Okay.
The Administrative Office has a brief announcement, Chair Stoppa.
Thank you, Mrs. LaVonlada.
We'd just like to announce that the county has been given an allocation. We have not yet received funds, but in the amount of approximately $8.9 million further to the American Rescue Plan. The guidance is 150 pages, 151 actually pages long, so we're still working through that. And the Treasury Department calls that were scheduled for yesterday. One was oversubscribed, and the second one was canceled, so that leads me to believe there were some technical difficulties over at the Department of Treasury, but we will be trying to join a call hosted by NACO this morning and Admin, and we will bring recommendations to the board as soon as we have them.
Thank you. Any further staff announcements?
Yes, I have one. Oh, thank you very much. Hi, this is Corey Allen, Department of Human Services Agency Director. I wanted to let you know that as of yesterday, we did reopen a lobby at the 509 East State Trail Street, Human Services Department. We're open every weekday from 8 to 5, and we will be keeping those safety measures in place. You can expect, if you visit us, we will do a temperature check. Masks will be required for all visitors, anyone aged two years and older. Of course, we encourage you to continue to use our phone line at 209-754-6448, or going online to apply for CalFresh, Calworks, or Medi-Cal, and that address is the letter C, the number 4, yourself.org. I have one other announcement after that. I wanted to let you know that May happens to be National Military Appreciation Month. We do plan to return with a formal proclamation to your board at your next regularly scheduled meeting, but for today, I really wanted to make sure to pay homage to those who have given so much for our continued freedom. Throughout May, there will be opportunities to recognize and celebrate veterans, those who are presently serving, and their families for the sacrifices that they have made. This week, we do invite you to meet our community veteran services team. Of course, they will have a booth at the Calvers County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee. We do hope that you'll come out and meet them. Their goal, and I have seen it firsthand, they're absolutely on top of this, is to reach and ensure every veteran and their families have access to all the services to which they are entitled, to ensure the best quality of life to which they have so, worked so hard for. So with that, we will return with something more formal soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any further staff announcements? Any further staff announcements?
None at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll move on to the Public Health update. Public Health Services. Receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. You're, you're back in the hot seat, Ms. Allen.
I have shared my screen. Is that visual at this time?
Uh, we're not currently seeing your sharing.
It says on pause, just working through it here. There we go. Let's resume share. That helps, doesn't it? Okay, now can I see that we're seeing that here?
Yes.
Okay. Today, we do want to give you an update on the COVID-19 or novel coronavirus pandemic. I want to thank everyone on the team that has worked so hard. Today, I will be joined by Doug Archer with Mark Twain Medical Center and your new health officer, Dr. Renee Ramirez. So what you're seeing here in front of you is the snapshot that any one of us can access by going to the Calaveras County website and looking at the COVID-19 updates. As of last night, and I have updated them from the data you received yesterday, we are at 2,125 confirmed cases. We have given 32,057 vaccinations. We do have 15 active cases as of now and one active hospitalization. Of all confirmed cases, 2,057 have recovered. And of course, we are sad to report that since our last report, we did have one additional death in Calaveras County, to which we send our condolences to family and friends. One death is one death too much due to this pandemic. You may ask yourself if there are specific trends around deaths that we are experiencing in Calaveras County. Rest assured, our epidemiology team at the Public Health Department continues to look at those trends and see if anything comes up out of the data, and we are not finding any particular, particular trends. You also notice we don't typically provide details as to locations or types of person impacted, and that's really due to the very small round nature of our community. Giving information on where individuals reside is very risky, and with HIPAA and other privacy laws, we do want to honor that privacy for individuals and their families. What we have found is that the trends really lie in, in our current cases, coming out of household clusters. And what we really hope to do is stay within this orange tier. As you can see, we continued to stay in the orange tier moving into this week. I know that this flag there says May 4th. The information did not come till late last night that we resided in the orange, but I must draw your attention to the circle of red that's coming all around our county. And that is an indicator of something happening that we have the ability to correct. We can move towards yellow, but we have to really do those things that we've been talking about for over a year now. Washing hands, keeping social distance, really using the vaccines that are available to us. And we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to make them even more available to you. The social distancing and of course, keeping facial coverings when you're around individuals. We would have seen more cases coming out of those households had more people not been vaccinated, but due to the vaccinations people have, we did end up really mitigating the possible impact that could have come. So as I've mentioned, we are in that moderate or orange color that started back on the 19th of April and reported on the 20th, and we continue to this day in that color. Just really briefly, I wanted to give you a picture of what's going on around us. I know we often kind of peek around those county lines and see what's happening, and we do. Back at least as of May 4th, we were slightly higher than our neighbors. But what we do have is a lot going on in vaccines. So last Saturday, the Mark Twain Medical Center did host for the morning and an afternoon session to access vaccine or provide them to you. We today will be at the Veterans Hall in Valley Springs in the morning from 9 to 12, and that's for the Pfizer vaccine. Wednesday or tomorrow, McCallum Hill, you can join us there from 9 to noon for the Moderna. Thursday, look at this, every day, West Point Community Hall, 9 to noon, and that'll be your one-time shot of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, and wrapping up on Friday at the San Andres Library from 9 to 12. Again, that's the Pfizer vaccine. I also wanted to draw your attention to the fact that we do have a homebound COVID-19 vaccination initiative happening now. If you are unable to leave home due to limited mobility, due to health issues, please dial We will come to you. Johnson &amp; Johnson, this is a one-time vaccination. Yes, you must be a Calaveras County resident. This is what we're doing to try and help mitigate the impact of the coronavirus here in Calaveras County. Remember, for all those vaccine clinics, myturn.ca.gov. Any questions?
Ms. Calloway, your light's on.
Ms. Allen, do they have to go to, can they, can they go to my turn as well as call that 419 number, or is it just 419?
The part that I have is that it will be the phone number that Colleen, if there's a different answer, please provide so.
Hi, Supervisor Calloway. The best thing for them to do is to just call the local number. What will happen is we will, we're organizing the homebound folks kind of by region, and what we will do is group people together, and then we'll actually register them onto my turn. So they don't even have to worry about that. All they have to do is just give us a call, and they can leave a message on our voicemail.
Thank you.
Any further board questions or comments?
I have one more.
Yes, Ms. Calloway, your light's still on.
Ms. Allen, are we still doing the fairgrounds? Or, well, it's Fair Week, so I know we're not this week, but are we planning on going back to the fairgrounds twice a week, once a week? Not at all?
Ms. Rodriguez, if you can offer up. As you've said before this week, that's the last information I have, but I know we're talking about some adjustments, and Colleen's going to provide that info.
Hi, Supervisor Calloway. Yeah, so next week, because of the dramatic decrease in the number of vaccines that people, or the number of people that are coming to get vaccines, next week will be our last time at the fairgrounds. Moving forward, what we're doing in public health is really trying to focus on more targeted clinics and possibly even pop-up clinics. We're just trying to catch people where we can, and the fairgrounds take a tremendous amount of people power through our very volunteers, our entire public health staff, female volunteers, and when we have upwards of a 20% no-show rate with numbers that are much, much lower than, than we would have expected, we feel like our time will be better used if we're just going to start targeting specific areas around the county. So next week will be the last week.
Thank you.
If there will be no further board comments or questions, we'll move on to public comment?
Is Mr. Archer going to answer?
Oh, Mr., yeah, thank, thank you. Will Mr. Archer or Mr. Ramirez be doing any comments?
I can, I can provide a real quick update. As Colleen mentioned, we did our clinic on Saturday. We also experienced a pretty high no-show rate. I believe we did about 240 vaccinations, but we had about 60 no-shows. We're going to continue our Saturday operation this Saturday and the following Saturday, but after May 22nd, we are going to ramp down our Saturday clinics and just keep working with the county health team and see if we can, you know, maybe provide a spot clinic here or there, or provide some resources to help their operations. But like Colleen mentioned, it's just, you know, with the high no-show rate, it makes it kind of a inefficient process, and I think there's so many opportunities to get your vaccine elsewhere that people are taking advantage of it.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. On your Saturday clinic, or, you know, just, just for a question for the public, are you using the Moderna, Pfizer, or Johnson &amp; Johnson, or whatever you have on hand at the time?
Pretty much whatever we have. This last Saturday, we did a morning session of Moderna, afternoon of Pfizer, and I believe we're doing the same thing this coming Saturday.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other staff comments or statements? With that, we'll move on to public comment.
Mr. Ramirez?
Ms...
Dr. Ramirez?
No, I don't think.
I'm here. Hi, good morning.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Ramirez, I was, do you have anything you wanted to say?
I just wanted to put out there for the public to enjoy the upcoming fire jump in the fair, and just to remind everybody to, you know, use your mask.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Ms. Clerk, may we move on to public comment?
We have Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. Stoughton?
Oh, here I am again. Yes, I have a, we'll just handle this right here. One of you, please email me the phone number for the, for the vaccine at home. At 10:00 AM on Thursday, I have a meeting in Alameda that I physically have to attend. So that is my issue there. I, I had a lot of complaints today, but you've alleviated a lot of the problems with the, with the vaccine clinic in West Point, one of the 95255 and 95222 are one of the targeted areas by the state, and the county hadn't gotten to it till now. You might want to keep at the, at the transfer station, you might want to keep COVID protocols there until everybody is cleared, you know, two weeks to get the Johnson &amp; Johnson, because they have opened up completely without any social distancing and so forth. Also, your building, the West Point Community Hall, had an event at it, and I didn't, didn't see much, much of COVID protocols going on in the area that people didn't, have not had an opportunity to have a vaccine administered to them yet. You're doing a better job. Last year was a disaster, and earlier this year was equally a disaster in that you didn't respond quick enough or thorough enough, and didn't answer questions, and didn't do any media buys, unless I know, unless I don't know something. I didn't see any media buys that you said you were going to do, and I always encourage that. It's important to, that everybody knows. Haven't seen any signage, and that's important as well. Anyway, welcome the new person aboard, and I hope they enjoy their time with the county. And two people, we have two people there, they're new, and I will talk to you a little bit later. Take care. Bye-bye.
Any further public comments, Madam Clerk?
None at this time.
Thank you. Any further comments by staff or board members? With that, we'll move on to recognition and acknowledgements. We'll move to number five, economic and community development, adopt a proclamation recognizing the newest government-centered beautification project rejuvenation. Mr. Toffenelli?
So in the interest of time and the opportunity to actually go out to the project rejuvenation, I was wondering if we could move this to right before lunch? Or do you want to do it now, and then do the dedication outside? What are the thoughts?
I, I... We should do the proclamation now, and then when we go outside, Mr. Toffenelli? Your, your chair, Mr. Ramirez? I think we'll do, we'll, we'll do the proclamation now, and then, and then we can dedicate the pa, the paper and everything when, when we do everything out at lunch.
Great.
Thank you.
This item is adopt a proclamation recognizing the Calaveras County Facilities Division for the creation of project rejuvenation and dedicating it to the citizens of Calaveras County. And this is a construction project that is outside in the Glade area for a long time. It was, it was an area that kind of got neglected somewhat, although many people and employees had lunch, or there's tables there, used to have lunch out there under the trees, but now it's been revived or rejuvenated into this large water project. So whereas, Calaveras County Facilities Division is not only responsible for improving and maintaining county properties and facilities, but also for creating spaces that represent our county. And whereas, facility staff are continually creating beautiful spaces where staff in the community can enjoy, relax, have lunch, and even get married. And whereas, the facilities manager, Mr. Patrick Martin, and his amazing crew are extremely resourceful in repurposing materials such as old barn wood, scrap steel, although it says tin here, a cargo ship anchor chain, and we're in Calaveras County, I don't know where we got an anchor ship chain, but we do. A metal utility rack, and even a dead campus redwood tree. And whereas, the facility staff are equally successful in obtaining donation and grants for further beautification with plants, flowers, trees, and shrubs. And whereas, the term "one person's trash is another person's treasure" rings especially true in the embodiment of project rejuvenation. And I will stop there. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Martin, would you like to come forward? I, you know, the conversation comes up, Mr. Toffenelli brought it up, and I've heard the story, the anchor chain, where'd it come from?
Well, I can't tell you for sure. I can only speculate with rumors that I've heard. Years ago, we had a gentleman here by the name of Mr. Sanders, and he loved war surplus sales. So we have a half-track that sits up above us that was from those days. I believe that anchor chain and that buoy came from war surplus.
Interesting, you know, something of that weight magnitude. Someone transferred that up here. It's impressive, you know. Any other board questions or any statements you would like to make?
No, I, I would just like to take an opportunity to shine the spotlight on the true heroes of this project, and that is the staff of the Facilities Department. It's one thing to come up with crazy ideas, which I am real good at doing, but for them to pull it off in such a fashion is really impressive. I look at that, and I, I see a, a time capsule of the history of this county, and I think it's going to be something that we can all be proud of. I've seen numerous weddings, and we are just getting ready to do the dedication. So I think it's really going to be a nice project to, to help get us out and get us back to normal. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. With that, we'll go to public comment. With that, we'll go to public comment.
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay. With that, we'll move back to, oh, consider a motion?
Okay.
Or a statement first?
Mr. Chair, I'll move this item.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by recognizing the Calaveras County Facilities Division for their dedication in the creation of Project Rejuvenation and dedicating it to the citizens of Calaveras County. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 11th day of May 2021.
Anybody who gets the opportunity, I would, it would be great to see you out there at 12 today for the ceremony. You know, the staff has really gone beyond in what they've done out there. It's impressive, so. With that, we'll move on to item six, Health and Human Services Agency, adopt a proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Mr. Gueramendi?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As you all are aware, this is my fifth year on the mental health board, and it's a very rewarding board to serve on, you're all welcome to attend sometimes. It's a, it's got a really important charge in our county, and it is my pleasure to read the proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month 2021. So whereas, half the population will experience some type of mental health challenge over the course of a lifetime, and whereas, mental health challenges are one of the most common health conditions in California, affecting one out of six, one out of six adults and impacting both the person experiencing mental health challenges and those persons who care and love the person facing the challenges. And whereas, one out of every 24 Californians with a serious mental health illness have difficulty functioning in everyday life, and if left untreated, have life expectancies 25 years shorter than the general population. And whereas, every day, millions of people face stigma related to mental health and may feel isolated and alone going years before receiving any help. And whereas, recovery can and does happen, and all Californians should know that support and help is available regardless of any individual situation. And whereas, creating a community where everyone feels comfortable reaching out for the support they deserve is crucial to ending the stigma around mental health. And whereas, Calaveras County Health and Human Services Agency behavioral health programs plan on working with several different partners and entities throughout the county to provide tools and resources to suicide prevention awareness and help break the stigma of suicide. Everyone can support Mental Health Awareness Month in California's mental health movement. Each mind matters by wearing lime green this month. I believe Wendy from mental health, behavioral health with us.
Hi, Board, thank you for having us today and doing your part in ending the stigma for behavioral health. Today, we have somebody who has been part of behavioral health for a long time, ready to share a story with you all. Thank you again.
Hi, everybody. My name is Christina Sherr, and I first started receiving services from mental health. Hold on, John. Sorry, I'm dropping my set off at school right now. John Brownie? But it has been really a great accomplishment with the help of everybody at mental health, especially Wendy. She's, she's been my walk through everything. And also Todd Massanell. But without that, I... Hold on, girls, hold on, hold on. I wouldn't be where I am today. And I started college, I suffered from addiction, and now I've got five years clean. And it's just really amazing what, what mental health can help out with, if you're willing to accept the help that they're giving and acknowledge the fact that you have to do your part in it as well. Hold on, I'm sorry, hold on. And now I am, I'm so sorry. Let me. Not bad. Now we have officially moved, we are buying our own home, and I am almost done with my college courses, which I have one, one year exactly left of my college courses. And had it not been for everybody in their help, their staff, and guide me through everything, I would not be where I am today. And it's been, it's been a really rough road because I suffered from depression, and I started out on medication and everything, but with counseling, the medication, I was able to pull out of it and become a more functional human being, which is really nice, because most days I wouldn't even be able to get out of bed. And I, it's just amazing what mental health has actually done for me. Thank you, Wendy, for everything you have done, and Todd, thank you so much, too. I'm going to go ahead and get off since these babies are screaming. Thank you all so much.
Thank, thank you for sharing your story, and, you know, your patience throughout your statement today is testament to your success.
Only a mom could have pulled that off. It's impressive.
We're happy to hear your story and of your success.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you all.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, so we'll bring that to public comment.
There's no public comment at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All entertain a motion by the board?
So move.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. Thank you for the second, Ms. Coway. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Very well, and I want to just compliment Wendy and her team as well. They do amazing things, work with the sheriff. We've got a really good program, folks. We should all be proud of it. So now therefore, be it proclaimed, the County of Calaveras Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the County of Calaveras and recommits our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. Passed and adopted by this Board of Supervisors on the 11th day of May 2021. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. With that, we'll move on to item seven, District Attorney, adopt a proclamation recognizing May 7, 2021, as Provider Appreciation Day. Ms. Fulendorf. Yeah, she'll have the opportunity once you read, and then we'll give Ms. Yuck. Thank you for showing up, Ms. Yuck.
You're welcome to stay there, Barbara. Hey. Whereas each week, over 4,884 children ages zero to 12 across Calaveras County need childcare and after-school care program so that their parents can work. And whereas, over 165 local childcare providers and elderly, early childhood education staff in Calaveras County devote their lives day in and day out to supporting young children in their earliest and most important years. And whereas, access to quality, affordable childcare became even more important to the physical and economic health of the county during COVID-19 pandemic, as working parents and employers were impacted by daycare and school closures. And whereas, long-term studies show that quality childcare and early education programs, particularly for low-income children, decrease following future negative outcome. Likelihood of special education enrollment, juvenile delinquency, adult incarceration, and welfare participation, thereby increasing the quality of life for all citizens and reducing government spending. And whereas, Provider Appreciation Day offers a unique opportunity to recognize and commend children, childcare providers for important services they provide to the community and for their dedication, compassion, and strong family values. And whereas, Calaveras Childcare Council, the Calaveras County District Attorney, the Calaveras Health and Human Service Agency, Resource Connection, First Five, and Calaveras County Office of Education are working together to acknowledge the importance of quality childcare services for all children and families, and to enhance the quality and availability of such services. Whereas, Calaveras County citizens are encouraged to recognize childcare providers and early education staff for important work they do every day in supporting working families and shaping the lives and future of their children.
District Attorney Barbara Yuck. Good to see your face, it's been quite some time, you know, and glad we're able to open the chambers for these proclamations today. It's, you know, it's good to see staff and our fellow electeds being able to come in.
Was very excited to come here and see you all in person. It's been a very, very long time. I've had both my shots, so I hope it's okay, I took my mask very briefly. But thank you very much for this opportunity and to present the proclamation to you, declaring May 7 as Provider Appreciation Day and honoring all our childcare providers and early education teachers in our county. It really is a very important function to help us raise healthy families, support our kids, and it does, it really helps raise good citizens and reduce juvenile delinquency and reduce adult crime. So, you know, while I no longer have a personal need for childcare, as district attorney, it's still a very important issue to me because of the crime prevention aspect of it, and as a boss, too. You know, through this last year, it was really touch and go with some of my employees, whether or not they were going to be able to continue to work, because they had young children and were having issues finding childcare. My department was fortunate that we persevered and the childcare providers stepped up, and we've been able to keep employees through the pandemic. I don't know that all departments were quite so lucky, and I think that, you know, any department that has any employees with young children and any business in the community that employs anyone with young children really saw that issue highlighted for them this last year, the importance of childcare and early education teachers. So thank you very much for your consideration of this proclamation, and it was really great to see all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Yuck. Any board comments? Ms. Coway?
I need to compliment Ms. Yuck on her years of dedication to this issue. She hasn't let up for one moment on recognizing providers who I needed as a single mom, and for the Child Resource Center, and anything having to do with children in our county. She also needs to be recognized for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. Ms. Fulendorf, is there a comment you want to make?
No.
Okay. Very good. Public comment?
There's no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Fulendorf?
Now therefore, as Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, we do hereby proclaim May 7, 2021, Provider Appreciation Day in Calaveras County.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Ms. Yuck. We really appreciate it, and, you know, it's home for all of us with children. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. With that, our board chambers are open to the public. If you want to be here in person, we continue to provide the avenue of Zoom to provide your public comments, and just be mindful that we do have social distancing and all health procedures and masks and everything apply while being on the, in the area of the government center. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Mr. Stoughton?
Mr. Stoughton?
Very good. Here I am again. We're going to get this over before 10 o'clock for me. You can hear me, correct?
Yes, sir.
Very good. I'd like to talk about the position of CIO. Some potential applicants, I'm not sure if they applied, but called around, and we're asking people with some knowledge, and even one that had served as a CIO, for their opinion on applying for the position of a CIO of Calaveras County. The responses people gave were just amazing. But the one thing that you could take away from it was that board, board participation, the board's influence over the CIO, the board's manipulation of CIO, the board's, the board not following their statutory job description was the one thing that was, that stood out, that was commented on by a lot of people. Be more careful in the way you go about doing your business, because everything comes back to haunt you, the county, and that position and employee. So please, understand that, you know, in some respects, you folks have to, have to monitor each other and make sure that if a board member is stepping outside their statutory job description, that you say, wait a minute, that's wrong, we're an entire board here. We have to look out, we have to look out for the entire county. It's not just one board member that should be, that should have undue influence over the board. Or if a board member says, well, I have a special connection with this CIO, so let it come through me. Watch out for that, too. You know, one thing you have to ask is not of the applicant, but of each other. Have you had, do you have prior knowledge of this applicant? Do you know this applicant? Have you been talking to this applicant? Have you, have you manipulated this situation in any way? Because that's happened as well in the past. So with that, have a great meeting. There is, you know, there's one item that I wanted to speak on, but 10 o'clock is rolling around, and I have to get going.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton.
Take care. Have a wonderful day.
We have Megan Fisk?
Megan Fisk?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. My name is...
My name is Megan Fisk, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. The CPC is a group of community organizations and individuals who want a healthy and sustainable future for Calaveras County. United behind 11 land use and development principles, we seek to balance the conservation of local agricultural, natural, and historic resources with the need to provide jobs, housing, safety, and services. As the state's general plan guidelines tell us, the general plan is more than the legal underpinnings for land use decisions. It is a vision about how our community will grow, reflecting community priorities and values while shaping the future. Accordingly, the 2019 General Plan update adopted by the Board of Supervisors expresses a desire to create a better future with a diverse economy, workforce housing, improved roads, conserved agricultural land, energy and water use efficiency, fire safety, peace and quiet. But the 2019 General Plan is also a very long document, divided into many elements, most having a lengthy introduction. Some provisions are mandatory while others are optional. Development project applicants are faced with the challenge of ferreting out of each general plan element any new requirements and any new opportunities that may apply to their projects. To aid in this effort, the Calaveras Planning Coalition has developed a checklist to help project applicants fulfill the goals and satisfy the policies in the county's 2019 General Plan. The CPC's checklist puts the relevant information in one place for project applicants to consider as they design their projects. We sent each supervisor a copy of this checklist. The checklist is also available on the CAP CPC website at calaverascap.com. We hope that project applicants will use this checklist and join us all in building better communities for life in the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisk.
There's no other further public comment.
Is there any one in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Thank you. With that, we'll move on beyond public comment, and at this time, I'd like to take a 10-minute break. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We'll be moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for a later discussion. Any board members would like to pull any consent items? Ms. Fuldorff?
I would like to pull item 11 and 17, please.
Mr. Garamendi?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item 15.
Any other board members like to pull anything? Any staff would like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I would call on Health and Human Services. I'd like to please pull item 19.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any further staff like to pull any consent items? Any public like to pull any consent items?
We'd like to pull item 13.
Item 13. Thank you, Mr. Kraltich. Any further items pulled by the public? Would that all entertain a motion on the remainder?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on unanimously with the board. Ms. Fuldorff, you pulled item 11. We'll start with item 11.
Sorry, hold on. Yes, there was an email that was from a constituent in my district regarding this item, and there are two questions. One, has there been an audit to determine the actual cost to issue a permit? The county has issued 45 permits to date. And the second question is how many more refunds is the county anticipating and one more applicants withdraw their applications?
Is Mr. Wayland available?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Greg Wayland, the Director of Cannabis Control, and I'll take the second question first on the issue of future withdrawals. It's really difficult for us to be able to make an assessment of that because applicants are in control of their own process, and they're the ones who are invested in the application process and make decisions on what to do with them. So unfortunately, I can't really give a, any kind of concrete information on what may happen in the future with withdrawals. And then the first part of the question. Would you mind repeating that, Ms. Fuldorff?
Yes. Has there been an audit to determine the actual cost to issue a permit? The county has issued 45 permits to date, and I'll forward it to you as well.
Thank you. So, no, we haven't done an actual audit on the fees. What we have are controls in place, such as any day-to-day accounting activity that we undertake. Annually, when we present our budget, we do go through all of that in great depth and making sure that things line up the way they should. And of course, the auditor also monitors those issues as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wayland. Any further board questions on this item? Any public comment or questions on this item?
No public comments on this item.
Would that all entertain a motion?
Move.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wayland, for your answers.
Thank you.
We'll move on to, in numerical order, so, Mr. Kraltich, you pulled item 13.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. I talked to you, you all have a letter in front of you that is what we need signed for this, this grant we're applying for, but I'd just like to start by saying that Calaveras Grown is a local nonprofit organization that's been around since 2001. We have about 100 small producer members, and we've been running a farmer's market right here in the Master Gardener Demonstration Garden since 2015 and up in the Murphys Community Park since 2019. Since the middle of last year, we started what we call a mobile market, which is an online market for our producers' products, and you can go on there right now, I think until midnight tonight, and order your products for this week. That's at www.calaverasgrown.org. And it's all working really fantastically well for really an all-volunteer organization, really endogenous, so from the ground up, truly a from-the-ground-up organization. And we put, we had actually already thought about this whole mobile market concept before COVID came to our world, and we realized that it was the time to implement it. But now, we were growing, and we need to, we need to grow more in order for this to continue to be viable from all sides of it, the economics, the regenerative nature of it. So we're applying for a USDA Farmer's Market Promotion Grant and that in order to build a sustainable and accessible local food network, or that's continue to build the sustainable and accessible local food network that we've been working on since 2001. So what we're asking for today is your, basically your permission to start to think about, because we don't have this money yet, but putting a covered facility on the gravel parking lot that is just between where we are now and the demonstration garden here. And that would be able to be used, of course, for our farmer's markets as, as an aggregation hub for the products for this mobile market and anything else that could be dreamed up as a positive asset for our community. It could be a place for, it won't take away any parking spaces. It'll actually create covered parking for county employees who was ever parking there when we're not having markets or events. And I also think, aside from everything I've mentioned, it's actually, could be an important piece of infrastructure for the county as it seems that we're kind of moving away from indoor gatherings, and it might be nice to have outdoor or an open air space where people can get together and have events and workshops, trainings, et cetera, that could happen in the space, whether it's too hot or raining outside. So all we're asking for now is just that you're confirming that you, you know, you would entertain that, a new structure on the campus that, of course, the county wouldn't have to pay for. Is there any questions about that? I'm also here today with Odile Morrison, is the Secretary of Calaveras Grown, and I'm the President of our organization currently.
Mr. Garamendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Sean Odile, for doing this. I just want to, I know I've mentioned this to this board before, but the progress that's been made in Calaveras Grown is spectacular, especially this mobile market. We could all go buy artwork, cakes, vegetables, online, have it delivered to our local area. It's great access, and it's good for our small businesses. So people, you actually know who you're buying your food from. They're getting the full value of it, and it's a great service. So I encourage the community to participate in it. Go to the library, pick up your food, check out a book, and support your local economy. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Kraltich. You know, your dedication to the county and continued is appreciated, and, you know, you've instilled some great things through the Master Gardener, and we do appreciate it. Any further forward questions? Public comment?
There's no public comment on this item.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Garamendi.
I will second it.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Looks like you got 5-0, Mr. Kraltich.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to leave these here. These are, if anyone wants to have more information about our mobile market. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Garamendi, you pulled item number 15.
I did. Thank you very much. I have a bunch of questions on this, and, but I want to start off with the professor of my questions. I have, I, this is not directed at the individual by any means. I, but I do have questions. First one is, you know, just the process, and this is where my primary thing is, it says the board's determined that the candidate possesses the requisite skills and expertise. I know Amber, because she's part of this community and works on COG, but I have no ability to judge what her requisite skills or expertise are because there's no resume attached to this or any background. That's a concern that I have. My other concern, probably more important, is how does this work with COG? I'm seeing 29 hours a week, up to 29 hours a week. I know she's got a full-time job running the COG. We are part of COG, so we've got a dog in that fight. How does this work? Is she, is this a side gig? Are we buying out part of her time? Sort of, what's the mechanism? Does COG not need a full-time person? Is Amber going to work from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. five days a week covering us? And so I was hoping someone, HR or whoever put this together, could answer those questions. And I, and perhaps Gary could answer some of them because I was looking at the COG minutes, or COG agenda, and I didn't see that COG had taken this item up. So I just don't really know what the mechanism is and what's coming off the plate. Obviously, we've got some pretty big COG projects going underway. So either Judy or someone can explain that to me.
Ms. Hawkins or Ms. Von Latta?
Yes, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And so as far as experience and skills, so Ms. Collins does have a master's degree in planning, and so, and with her experience through COG, she does have the skills and abilities. In working through, I worked closely with county council in working through the employment agreement, and then, of course, working with Ms. Collins on the hours. Also, Peter Mauer met and talked through with Ms. Collins what, what we would need her services for. And one of the things in talking about 29 hours, 29 hours is where we consider, you know, part-time, over 29 hours is a benefited, considered a full-time position. And we had discussed that we, where her, where we would need her to step into would be in assisting the board with questions and then also higher-level questions from the staff in planning. And in those discussions, that's where it was felt that less than 29 hours would be appropriate. And also Peter left kind of a list of what would need to be done.
And if I may, just very briefly, Supervisor Garamendi, you know, this is, it's a, you said, would it be characterized as a side gig? And I suppose yes, that's how I would characterize it. I obviously am not in a position to speak to Ms. Collins's work with the COG or the other constraints that she may have on her time, but I would just note that this is a, it's a not-to-exceed 29 hours per week contract. It's an as-needed contract. And so, again, it's as many hours as necessary to kind of serve as that point person for the department and for the board in the interim role while the recruitment is being run. I would imagine that Ms. Collins or maybe even Supervisors Toffenelli or Fuldorff could speak more to the COG piece.
I can certainly speak to it. I'm Chair of COG, had conversations with Amber about this particular item. I have very much confidence in her abilities to do it as far as the time to do it. Right now, we have one meeting coming up in June, and she spoke to staff, and we spoke to staff about at COG, about her doing, taking on this responsibility. COG's office is just down the street, in the Mountain Ranch Road and Highway 49. And so she's just right here. She doesn't have far to go to be able to come into this office. We do not have a July meeting at all for COG, so she will be having several months, a couple months open here. I don't know how long this position will be open, but we are recruiting for it now. She can take on the responsibility. We did not have it on an item for the COG at the time because she had not been appointed yet or had not met and went through all the items that needed to go through. We told them that it would be on for the 11th, and we did have discussions on the timeframes that she would need to be able to do this job adequately, as needed. And we felt that between the timeframe with COG and the lack of a meeting in July and going just to June, that staff would be able to pick up any hours that she would need to spend over here. that she would need to spend over here. Very competent staff at COG. And she would, she's very involved with the wagon trail right now, which has to do with Public Works. And she would be closer to Public Works here, just across the buildings. So I think it fits in very well with her agenda and her timeframe and with COG. And the board did, she did send a letter out to the entire board after the meeting she had. And there was no comments from any of the board. They accepted her taking this job.
Okay, so just so I'm clear. So COG's expecting her, is paying her for 40 hours a week and we're going to pay her for anything else?
She's not on a 40-hour schedule. She's a contract employee at COG. She spends a lot more than 40 hours a week sometimes. So it's not per-hour job that she has over there. It's a contract. She's, she has a yearly salary, no matter how many hours she puts in, whether it's 10 hours or 50 hours or 60 hours.
But she's a salaried employee.
Yeah, she's salaried.
Right, so, right. So she's, I guess, I guess my question is, I mean, it's pretty obvious. If a full-time employee or full-time, as much as you guys have got her, is able to take this time off, the question would be, I mean, I would have a question, is COG, we're paying this person twice? She's got a salary and we're paying her a side gig. Obviously, it's all government dollars. I just, I, I don't understand how that'd work. Do we, if you're a full-time employee, they're expected to need that position to be full-time. And if you don't need that much time, so you've got extra time available to do a gig like this, do we need a full-time employee? It just, I don't understand how this works. I want to know what's coming off the plate versus, you know, I see us adding, but what's coming off the plate?
Jack, there's many people have a full-time job and have a second gig too. It's not uncommon. It happens all the time. And she's stepping in to avoid for us and help us out at the county in this position. So, I mean, it, it's not uncommon for this type of thing to happen if somebody has a full-time job. They, they work two jobs. I worked two jobs for a long time.
Right, but you don't work two jobs for the same company?
COG is separate from the county. That's a JPA. And those funds funneled through there come from state and federal highway funds. And it sets up projects and works directly through Public Works. The funding mechanism through Public Works for those projects, Public Works runs those projects. We don't run projects through COG. We don't have a crew that goes out and does anything. So, so it's not really working for the county. It's working through a JPA, which is separate.
When I'm hearing Supervisor Gueramendi saying it's still public money, I hear what he's saying. You're paying her X amount and now she's going to be going X plus. So is there going to be a way that there'll be some adjustments to the COG pay when she's working with taxpayer money with the county? That's what I hear.
I don't know what was negotiated in the contract, that the County Council's right there and Judy's right there to answer those questions. I have no idea what was in that contract and what its specifics of it are. I know the COG Board had no comments on her when she sent the letter out and telling them and asking their comments. So that's, that board runs that part of it and it's up to them to decide whether they're going to have adjustment on her pay or not. There was no conversation with that. It was, nothing was agendized because it hadn't, she's not being appointed until today. So if it comes up in a June meeting, that'd be a conversation for that board, not, not us here. We don't set that salary for her.
Understand. I think that was just the perception.
Right, I mean, I, I like Amber. I got no problem with this and I have no, I just assumed that when we were moving forward, we'd be conceptually buying out part of her time from COG, for example, like we've, we've done on assignment or stipends before. But this, it, you know, it's a process question. It feels like we're double-dipping. And if we're not and it's legal, then that's fine. But there is a perception that looks like, and I don't know what the hourly rate is. It wasn't listed, but it just feels odd.
So the hourly rate is, you're right, it's not spelled out, but it, or it's not, there's no number in there, but it's spelled out that it's explicitly whatever the current Planning Director hourly salary is on the board-approved salary grade. And, you know, it does stipulate that Ms. Collins will be filling out timesheets with what work she is doing for the county and that those will be turned in and she will be compensated on an hourly basis for the hours actually worked doing work for the county. And, you know, I would just echo what Supervisor Toffenelli said that if the, if the COG Board, you know, feels that they need to make some sort of adjustment, that's certainly their prerogative to do so.
To add to that, the hourly rate, just so you know, is 59.42 an hour as it's set right now.
I'd like to also add, just think of it as an on-call. No, it's on-call. So if she doesn't go 29 hours, we don't pay her the 29. It's eyes-on and eyes-needed basis. And recognizing as well that the summer progresses if the Board of Supervisors does not make a decision during the recruitment for planning, then we will come back and reevaluate this because, you know, come fall, there will be other items that COG will need to be focused on. But right now in this time here, she has the ability to meet both the expectations from the COG and what's needed at the board. Also, on top of wagon trail, she's, she's been working with admin on the federal funding as well, working with our lobbyists. So she's doing a lot of other activities that are beneficial to the county and to, to get more funding back to Calaveras County.
I, I agree. I mean, I, I think the work that Amber is doing is great. I have no complaint about it. This is not about Amber at all. This is about a process and how this comes about and how this looks. And I do not want it to be mixed up that I'm talking about an individual. I'm talking about a process and whether we're actually, I will assume that our attorneys and our human resources are doing this by the letter and correct. But I just can't, it's not about Amber. I just can't support a contract like this. But I could also count to three, so.
Understood, Mr. Gueramendi. Any further board comments? Public comment? Oh, Ms. Cowley. My apologies. I didn't see your light.
I agree with Mr. Gueramendi. This is a process issue. But the decision will have to rest with the COG Board. This is an agreement between the county and Ms. Collins. And it is a perception issue in the process. I agree with that. But it's because this is, involves Calaveras County Government Center with Ms. Collins, not the COG. It'll be up to the COG Board to make that decision on the, on the part of the process that Mr. Gueramendi's talking about. But I think his point has been, well, is made. Thank you.
A very, very good point, Ms. Cowley. I would like to follow up with that. You know, you know, Mr. Gueramendi, thank you for bringing this up. I think Ms. Cowley puts a big point, good point on it. If the, if COG feels there's a loss of time with her going over here at that point, you know, COG can make the decision that, you know, they're not okay with the loss of time and they, they can mitigate it as they see fit. You know, it's, but the question stands and I understand exactly where Mr. Gueramendi's coming from, perception. You know, what can, can be perceived is one thing, although I do also trust staff that they have checked the ins and outs of it. You know, our eyes are dotted, our A Ts are crossed when it comes to the law. Public comment?
There's no public comment on this item.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion by a board member.
I will move this item, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli, for the motion. It's seconded by Ms. Follendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 4-1 vote of the board. So we'll move to item 17, pulled by Ms. Follendorf.
And I know Cory is new, so I'm not quite sure who to direct them to. Looking at the amount and the time that the county's going to be contracted in, in regard, I know that Krista was working on this before she left. But my concern now with this contract is locking us into that many years with, rather than doing a contract for one year with options due to current conversations about county infrastructure and campus happening and also just the cost. Has there been any conversations regarding purchasing the building rather than locking in this or considering going back? Having a one-year, they need a place, I don't disagree. But then allowing for the conversation to purchase versus adding additional buildings to county campus? Because we're on the hook for a lot of maintenance items, which concerns me if it's not budgeted into the six years of maintenance that this contract is building, it's written up on top of the lease agreement.
Thank you, Supervisor Follendorf. This is Cory Allen, Health and Human Services Agency Director. And I do want to respond. I so value what you're talking about, about having that infrastructure where we're located more locally to the government center. In looking through the decisions that were made, I want to point out that just less than two years ago, there was conversation around purchasing this building. That purchase price came at $6,730,000. The conversation was brought to the debt, what is the name of that? The debt?
Debt Advisory Board.
Committee, thank you. The Debt Advisory Committee. And there was some robust conversation around whether or not that was the best thing to do right now. The director at the time did make a conservative decision based on that feedback she'd received from the sitting board at the time that really led to being a bit more conservative and doing something in a shorter term rather than this purchase. Since that time, I want you to know that a original decision was around a 12-year lease. That dropped to a 10 and then dropped to a seven-year lease, which was brought to your board, which then resulted in further conversations that brought us down to this five-year that we're at. I can assure you that the owner of this building will not go further than a five-year, which I think is indicated in the fact that they were not willing to even put in an out clause. I can also say that to move an operation of this size would take between six to 12 months. And that's, I'd be very optimistic. So when I look at it in that way, the five-year is the best that we were going to get. And then to wrap it up, I wanted to let you know, I sort of projected out, did the cost even jump from the prior trajectory of what we were paying in that 20-year lease? Because remember, we were in a 20-year term. And even the cost has really stayed consistent with what would be expected. So that's sort of my response at this point. Any further questions?
Yes, I just, you know, the cost is, to purchase the building is going to be the same, not you end up leasing. If not, give or take, would the percentage of the rent increase the last, I believe, two years? I just question now, what is really more beneficial? I mean, we're still paying the same amount, close interest. That's all I have.
Any further board questions on this item? Public comment? Oh, Ms. Cowley, so, once again.
I was slow. I mean, maybe Supervisor Gueramendi or Toffenelli could address a little bit of history. There was talk at one time of building a facility. And I, I don't know what's happened in the last, whatever, six years, what the story is.
Yeah, well, when Kristen was here and she was exploring different options, one of them was to construct and that was on our plate for a while, but it hasn't been discussed for a while. The other option, and right before she left, there was negotiations to buy the Toyon properties down by Toyon School, right in front of, on the highway there, and move down to that area and have them reconstructed to accommodate all of the offices that were needed for Health and Human Services. But that did not transpire. I don't know if it's still an option with Cory here, if she knows anything about it. When Sam was there, he was more consumed with COVID and the pandemic than anything else. And this is, is a five-year lease that we're committing to. So I don't know if they're during, I, I, I'm not familiar with what the plan is because we haven't had that ad hoc committee together for a while and haven't met for several months on it, at least since Kristen's left. So maybe Jack can add a little bit to it, but that's what was discussed. That's what was talked about. The amount of money to construct a facility the size that she needed and to buy a piece of land and add it to the county's land acquisitions or assets was also kind of a sticking point at one time in the amount of money and cost. So that's why Kristen was looking at the Toyon properties. So maybe Jack can add a little bit on that.
Do you want me to add?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, thanks, Marita. Thank you, Gary. Gary, Gary's correct. This was something that was hot on the plate right before COVID. And then COVID and Kristen, COVID came and Kristen left. So it slowed things down a little bit. One of the ideas that we'd been kicking around is, you know, we pay a lot of rent for various buildings throughout the county. HHSA in particular. And they have a lot of money that comes in different colors, primarily federal or state. And you can't, you can only use them for certain things. So one of the ideas we were looking at was very much what Mariposa did a number of years ago, where they went out and they had a third-party developer come in, build the building, and then we lease it back from them for a certain amount of time, which we can use these federal dollars for. We can't pay ourselves back, so we can't build it and pay ourselves. And the idea was, and then at the end of that 20 or whatever negotiated term, the building reverts to the county. So that was kind of as far as we got. We figured out how to do it, but there was no, nothing to really bring to the board and say, hey, should we go out and we've got lots of space, build 120,000-square-foot HHSA building? Bring everybody together, get something brand-new that'll last for generations? And, and here's a, here's a vehicle to do it. We just, you know, COVID hit and Kristen left and carry on.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about the piece of land out here by the library, going back there, but there were so many different projects that wanted to use that piece of land. And was it viable to put something there and the infrastructure going out to it? So, so we were, we were kicking around different other options, even purchasing a piece of land or even, you know, again, purchasing the Toyon and reconstructing something there that would facilitate. But again, that option, and Kristen was pursuing that a lot, very vigorously. But part of the conception of that was it's another piece of property that is off-campus. It's a drive to that place down there and, and it's not accessible to everybody like the building that we're leasing now. It's, it's here in San Raiz and it's accessible for, to a lot of different people. So those were the things being kicked around. But Jack's correct. COVID came and Kristen left and we haven't really had any discussion since then on it, so.
The good, the good news is, Supervisor Cowley, is that if, if this infrastructure bill goes through... bill goes through federally, maybe there's going to be a spot for health, and that's something. So we've got some really great options, we just need to discuss them as a board and figure out how we want to do, because Mariposa was successful in their building, they feel very happy about it. You know, places like UC Merced did two billion dollars worth of construction using the exact same model, so it's well-defined on what this looks like. And I think we all know that private sector can move a lot faster than local government, so five years, that takes in like a year for a private sector to build it and four for us to plan it.
Yeah, and that, that gets to the point I was just going to bring up, you know, with the infrastructure bill coming forward with us possibly maybe moving forward on talks on what our options are in the future, and that infrastructure bill being put forward, is a five-year term going to tie our hands for moving forward on anything else in that amount of time? Ms. Allen?
Yeah, I, I mean, a five-year term, does it impact our ability to plan for something in the future? No differently than if we were, I mean, we have to be housed at some place, and so yes, our money will be tied up into this lease, but what we can do is start doing, going back to that research that Supervisor Garimendi is referring to, around using the state and federal dollars to try and bring that down, following that Mariposa model. So we can absolutely get back to the work on that and see how we can do it, but I don't have any other alternative to house the staff without this, this lease that's up for us right now. Just know that we do end our lease at the end of this month that we are presently in, and so I apologize, but the five years is the, the best that we were able to come out with.
No, no, no need to apologize, and I also would understand with everything that's being said here, I don't think anything in that amount of time would come to fruition for a place to, to move into with construction, acquisition, and, and, you know, acquisition of the money to move forward also, so I mean, that, that all takes time, we are bureaucracy. Is there something else you would like to follow up with, Ms. Fuldorff? Sure? Okay, public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli, do we have a second?
Second, yeah, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Garimendi, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Passes on a four one vote of the board. Ms. Allen, you're on the hot plate, item nineteen.
I can't seem to step away, so I apologize, item nineteen, when we noticed that, we noticed that it was set for a one-year lease extension, when the item was set up, it was set up as a two-year, but since pulling the item and the robust conversation on the prior items, we have internally resolved the issue, we are okay with leaving it as a one-year extension. It's been a really great space there in West Point, and just, I'll just point out that it's going well to hop that, pretty low-cost option.
Thank you, is there any questions by the board on this item? Public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, I'll entertain a motion by the board.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Garimendi, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Coway, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on five oh vote of the board, thank you very much, Ms. Allen, hopefully we don't have to pull you down later today.
All the comments are yours, thank you so much for your time today.
Okay. That concludes our consent agenda, just want to make sure, double-check, we had quite a few things pulled, brings me back to the last couple of years. Regular agenda, item twenty-seven. Ms. Galino.
Good morning, Chair Stotter and Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director, I would like to pull item twenty-seven to come back at a later date with more detailed information, including the subrecipient agreements and maintenance agreements with the proposed projects for Prop sixty-eight.
Thank you very much, is everyone here okay with that, Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it, but Kathy, do you know when, how long before you bring it back?
I would think by the middle or so of June.
June?
Yeah, we're pretty close, we have a checklist that went out through the commissioners on these projects that are going to be very detailed and straightforward to fill out.
Do, do we have a timeframe constraints on, no?
No, as far as the Prop sixty-eight grant application, no, we do not, we're, we're okay on that, we have till December, so it'll be way before that.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number twenty-eight, Health and Human Services, Discussion Regarding the Recruitment and Compensation for the Planning Director, or Human Resources, my apologies, I, you know, had Ms. Allen on my mind still. Human Resources, Discussion Regarding the Recruitment and Compensation for the Planning Director, Ms. Hawkins.
This is Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director, I have been asked to bring forward a discussion regarding the salary on the Planning Director. We have been actively recruiting for the position, this is a difficult position to fill, there are, a, I guess the best way to describe, a silver tsunami within government, we have a lot of baby boomers who are retiring, and there's just not as many people going into government that is retiring out. I will say that Mr. Mallor is a very difficult person to replace, and as much as we tried to entice him to stay longer, it was his time to retire. And so we did go out and look at what our surrounding counties were paying in their salaries, and one of the things that we have noticed is that most counties pay a range for their appointed officials, where we pay just one rate, and so it's very difficult when we are comparing our salaries. And so when we look at our ranges, you know, we, we pay competitively at the Step A ranges, because that's basically all we have, is just one rate. But then when we get into the E-range of other counties, then that's where we're getting to be nine percent below our surrounding counties. So it is really the, I think, one of the things that we need to look at as we are doing the class and comp study that we are currently in the process, is looking at bringing salary ranges for our appointed department heads. I do think that our salary for our Planning Director is not far out of line, and we should look at it with, with our class and comp study with our other appointed department heads. Questions?
Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, thank you, Judy, for bringing this to us. The, the step processes for these three counties that you have listed, or even the other counties that you have down below, are, are they generally a three-step, four-step, five-step? What, what step process are they, are they all the same, or are they different throughout? What's the most common?
So the most common is to have five steps, and then there are counties that have, that will go, so they will go further steps because those are their longevities.
Oh, yes.
But it's typical to have five steps.
Okay, thank you. And you're, I just want to clarify that your recommendation is to move forward with this with the class and comp study?
Yes, it is.
So, you know, you do have an alternative here, we can make a decision at this time to move something else forward, but your recommendation is to move it with entirety of the class and comp study?
I, I do think that, you know, when we're looking at why it's difficult to fill a lot of our positions, we've had several positions declined in this, in the past week due to our candidates not being able to find housing. I mean, we have a lot of different reasons that we get turned down for our positions, and not all of them are salaries. I do know our salaries are something that need to be carefully looked at, and I think they all need to be looked at across the board with the class and comp. And I have brought this up to the previous board, that I feel that to be competitive, we do need to have a range with our appointed officials, because not only does it give them the ability to move up, but it also gives us the ability to negotiate salaries when we are hiring.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Mr. Toffenelli, did you have something further?
No, I just wanted to ask, during the most common five-step process, starting at step one, is there a percentage each step gets to get to the top tier, or do they divide it, or is it?
Yes, there's five percent between each step.
Thank you.
Mr. Garimendi?
Just one quick thing, I, I support the staff's recommendation that we run this through with everybody else. We have to somehow get away from this, this comp survey where we're including San Joaquin and Fresno. Fresno is a million people, San Joaquin County is seven hundred and fifty thousand, we are not like them. So I would hope that at some point we're able to remove that, but that's neither here nor there for this item today, thank you.
I would concur, Mr. Garimendi, apples and oranges, but at the same time, with the aspect, from my perception, the aspect of being competitive in the future, we, you know, we don't need to be the highest paid, but we need to be competitive at the same time. So, you know, somewhere in there is the, is where we will, we'll find moderation, I would hope. Ms. Coway?
Thank you. Ms. Hawkins, the, the comp study, the salary, isn't going to be done for quite a while, correct? So we're sitting on a position that we're not going to be doing anything or offering anything till the study's done, right?
That is correct, and we are, you know, I am working on, we're also targeting, you know, companies that we can be able to get the, the study done well before the timeframe the board gave me. We also want to make sure that, you know, I don't think that our salary is, you know, so far below our competitor, competitors that we can't get somebody in there. We are also working toward, you know, improving how we are doing things and, and being equitable. So I think those are our messages we can also get out there as we're recruiting and talking to people. So I do think there's a lot of challenges we have in recruiting, salary isn't the only challenge.
But in negotiating, you're asking somebody to bet on the come, and it's not there what it is that we're offering. I also look at it differently than Supervisor Garimendi regarding San Joaquin, because that's a recruiting field for the county. I could say the same Lake County's way up there, that's not even close, but maybe the deputy or assistant public works director in San Joaquin, we might want to look at what that person's compensation is. I just look at the kinds of things that we've expected of our planning director, and maybe it is because we had such an outstanding planning director, that the compensation of a hundred and twenty-three-five does not seem very competitive to what it is that we demand of our planning director and the task that the department has before them. I'll, I'll give up Fresno, I'm not sure I want to give up San Joaquin, and I'll give up Lake, is there another horse trade? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coway, any further board questions or comments? With that, do we have any public comment?
Yes, I have Mr. Stouton.
Mr. Stouton, I thought you had a ten o'clock appointment. Mr. Stouton?
Here I am again, I did have a ten o'clock, and I took care of it, now I'm back with you. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Marita, I'm not willing to give up Lake County, Lake County's in size, population, remoteness, and it's very similar to, uh, Calaveras County, I've had to spend time there. You know, it's good to hear about the five-step program that they use, some of them need a twelve-step program, but that's, that's not the point here. I had a conversation with a, a member of staff, and I said, well, isn't, isn't it kind of an insult to Peter to, to bring up the increase in pay once he leaves? He was such an outstanding person, and they said, well, Peter was a special situation, he wanted to be here. I said, you, you mean we have to increase the pay because we're on a track of people that don't want to be here? Anyway, take care, bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Stouton, any further public comment?
No further public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board, further discussion, or I'll entertain a motion?
There is no motion.
Oh, well, right, I'll entertain a recommendation, because we have, we have a recommendation here, and then we also have an alternative, so that's for the board to decide, correct, Ms. Coway?
Well, I'm not sure that, well, we would want to do a step program now, because that's in essence locking us into the other department heads and setting up an expectation, that's what we're going to do. I think, I'm hearing Ms. Hawkins say that salary is not an issue, it's one of several issues, but looking at the candidates that, or the lack of candidates, do you think that if we up the compensation with the idea, at some point we'll have a step system for all department heads, that that would help in the recruitment? I'm just amicron to all of them, it's not doing it for me.
It is always a possibility that we will get more candidates, and I can't say that, you know, with absolute certainty that we are, you know, not getting candidates because of the pay, or, you know, one way or the other. I'm saying that compared to other counties, we, the pay is not as out of line as, as some of our classifications that we have looked at. For example, when we had, I had gone back to my notes from when we had adjusted the pay for the building official, we were very out of line when we had looked at that. So if we were, you know, if we were to adjust the salary today, if we were to, you know, we, we could make a five percent change, and then that would, we would look at that as a B-step or C-step if we were to go and put steps in later, so that is an option. Changing five percent is about a seven thousand dollar increase to the position annually.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hawkins, we're going to take a brief break, we're having technical difficulties right now, so we'd like to bring this back in about five to ten minutes, depending on what it takes.
Okay.
Thank you. If it says confidential, it's not truly confidential. It depends on, depends on how it's stored. We are back. Ms. Hawkins, sorry, sorry for the interruption. It seems we've ironed out our technical difficulties, so we're ready to proceed. Did you finish saying what you had to say?
I think so. I'm not sure what the technical, the technical difficulties were. So basically, our, the options are to wait until our class and comp study is done and bring, and we will bring back the recommendation of the salary ranges for the department, the department heads, the appointed officials. Or we could look, if we were to increase the position such as a 5% increase, which would take the position to 6239, and that is a 7,000 annually, annual increase, then we could, then fit that increase into what the range would, would be. Or, so those are basically our options.
So my understanding is now we're at 5942. With that 5%, we will be going up to 6239. If, if that's the recommendation of the board. Board members? Mr. Gueramendi?
I'll make a motion to accept the staff recommendation, move it forward through the process, figure out what we said.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Well, considering there's not, it's not an action item, it's direction, are what, which one of the recommendations that Ms. Hawkins made?
The, the, there was the recommendation very clear at the top that Mr. Gueramendi just referred to, and then you're going to the alternatives as to that. So I think it's clear that Mr. Gueramendi's moving on a, on the recommendation at the top. Discussion regarding the recruitment of and compensation of planning director, you know, and moving forward with the class and comp study is my understanding.
So, I'm sorry, if I may, Chair Stoffer, if the board's direction is that they are going to go with the HR Director's recommendation of not addressing this separately now and just moving forward with the class and comp study, then the board would not be taking any action here.
Right, understood. So then we would need to take action for, for if we were to choose to move forward with a 5%?
That's not a decision that the board can make today. You could give Ms. Hawkins direction to bring back a future item doing that salary increase.
Okay.
Withdraw my motion then.
Withdraw. So we're basically, to Ms. Coway's chagrin, pulling the board on what they would like to do right now.
Well, as long as you agree with me, I'd like to recommend that Ms. Hawkins come back with, Sarah's?
Your app.
Sound, okay. A modification to the compensation, looking at the, maybe the, what's the 10 SEIU counties dropping Fresno, keeping San Joaquin, something. And that part of the increase hopefully will be part of the step system that would come back at some future date. I'd like to see an increase in the annual compensation tied to maybe SEIU's. I thought I heard Ms. Hawkins say 7%?
5%.
5%?
Mr. Gueramendi, what's, what's your appetite for?
I'm sorry, I just, how is that different, Maria, of what you suggested than having to move forward with the class and comp study? I'm not sure I understand the difference.
Okay, she's moving forward with the study, but that's somewhere down the road. So we've already agreed that we want her to do it, so that's, there's nothing to discuss unless we want to say, "Don't do it." What we're talking about is the compensation for the planning director. I believe the compensation that should be increased tied to the 5, whatever, the 5% minimum that Ms. Hawkins mentioned. And when the class and comp study is complete, it becomes just a step in the, what she's recommending for department heads.
May I clarify for you, if you don't mind, Ms. Coway? What you're asking for them to do is bring back sooner than later a 5% increase.
Yeah, and that's on the cheap side.
Just so I'm clear, you're suggesting that we pull the planning director out of the normal process and put them to the front of the process, or are you suggesting a straight increase without the study?
A straight increase and without the study, because if we wait for the study, we're going to be a year down the road.
But I just heard the staff say that we are competitive with our current price, and that's probably not the obstacle to hiring somebody. That's what I was just told.
It was one of the obstacles. That's all. I'm, I think we should offer more in the annual, similar to what we did with the planning, excuse me, with the building official.
May we listen? Ms. Coway is making a suggestion that we bring back a 5% sooner or later. Mr. Gueramendi, you're making a, a recommendation that we go, we keep the planning director in with everyone else moving forward with the class and comp study, as we've already given direction for it?
Yes.
Okay. So those, I clearly hear Ms. Coway's recommendation. I clearly hear your recommendation. Ms. Bolndorff?
Judy, can you clarify for me? Currently on the recruitment document, it just says the current rate. Do we need, if we're going forward with the comp study, knowing that we want to do the 5% increase, do we need to give you direction to reflect that on the recruitment paper? Knowing that that is the base, that dollar amount, but it could go up once the comp study's done?
I would not recommend any, making any changes until the board has actually taken action to make those changes because we never know what's going to happen, and so I don't think we want to roll out something sooner.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. I would concur with you.
I'm not sure that I understand what you're saying, Ms. Edwards, that we just wait till the comp study's done?
No, I, and I, I may have misunderstood Supervisor Bolndorff's question, but I think I heard it as, so we all know, we're obviously running our recruitment for the planning director position right now. It has the current planning, board-approved planning director salary on it. What I heard was questioning whether we might want to advertise it as, oh, and it may be higher soon after we do this class and comp study, and I would not recommend that until actual formal board action to increase the salary has taken place.
So then what's the point of the, what's the point of having the increase? Because if we, if we give direction to have the 5% increase, you're going to have to bring it, bring it back just for the 5% increase? Or would it be, when you bring it back, have it scaled while the comp study is happening so that they are aware when they apply to the position that there is a potential, that that increase will go up? I know, I, I think the whole thing's convoluted at this point.
May I make an attempt at answering this, Ms. Edwards?
I, maybe Judy can do a better job than I can. I just think that it would be imprudent to advertise any potential salary or potential salary increase until the board has actually taken action to implement that increase.
Correct. The question of the giving you direction, giving staff direction is, are we, are we going to do it? My question, if I'm going to, if we're going to give direction to staff before they bring it back, is do we want a sliding scale? Or do we just want it promoted for one dollar amount? That Supervisor Coway is suggesting. So my question to whoever is, do we want, and while we're working through what that exact dollar amount is, knowing that it's going to be a 5, 5% increase, do we want a scaling, do we want it scaled? And I guess also to the board, do we want to start with a base, knowing that it could potentially go up? So we have more broad recruitment?
So we would, I would have to have clear direction on what we, what staff is bringing back. So either, you know, we are bringing back a 5% increase. I don't think we want to bring back the step range for just one position. So we either bring back an increase, like a 5% increase for this position, or we wait for the class and comp study, and we continue to recruit with the current salary. Does, does that answer your question?
Not really, but it's okay.
My recommendation is that you bring it back with a 5% increase.
We, we, we understand that. Mr. Gueramendi's a stick with the class and comp study. Ms. Bolndorff, 5% increase brought back or a, or a class? Mr. Toffenely, I'm going to give you all.
Let me just speak a little bit here on, I understand Maria's point. I understand Jack's point. And Amanda's point was, do we want to allow it to be out there under recruitment with a salary range, say between 123 and maybe 7,000, 5%? To give a little bit of leeway right now before the class and comps back that if you have some negotiating power, if somebody steps up that's really, really good, that we see is, would fit very well, to give a negotiating between Judy and Krista, to get a salary range for them, negotiating for them. And then we'll wait for the compensation, rate and compensation study to come back to find out exactly where that falls in and what the 5% step increase would be. Because right now, we're in the middle. You look at Amador, Tuolumne, and San Joaquin. Their, their step one is 114, 110, and 113. We're at 123, so we're probably starting at a step three, but you can't go, you can't go past step three. That's it. There's no four and five. But I think to her point was, do we want to advertise it as, as a, a salary range of 5% just to get some negotiating power there? And then once the comp comes back from, from when everybody else has theirs, we can make adjustments at that time. But we're, still have some negotiating room for any candidates that wish to apply. Does that speak to basically what you were saying? So there's three different items here on the floor as to which way we want to go. I was thinking of a little bit of a salary range, open up a little bit of negotiations for qualified candidates myself, to what Amanda was speaking of. I don't know what that will do for the comp study later on. If we hire somebody at a higher rate than what we're advertising right now because we're allowing a little bit of negotiating room. Obviously, right now, we're again at midpoint in our salary range. It would bump it up if the qualified candidate is hired to around a step four for these other counties.
If I may, Mr. Toffenely, and, you know, just from my perspective, I would caution putting anything out on paper on a recruitment that has not come to reality or fruition by a vote of the board through, through, through proper channels. Because, you know, Ms. Edwards, please correct me if I'm wrong. Because at that point, you're, you're proposing a possible promise that may never become reality, and we can't follow through.
But I don't understand, Ben, you're asking for direction, and so part of the direction and conversation is what do we want in, for the recruitment? So either board, do we want a sliding scale that allows that to negotiate and have staff work on that to bring back for a proposal? Or do we want it one number, and that's it, and then they bring that back? I don't see that as being a vote. It's being a general question to Judy, to HR. What work do we want her to do? What, what do we want? I mean, if we, if we wait for the comp and study, that's fine. We can wait for the comp study. We've made a decision. We're not going to talk about salary. But if we're telling them, giving them direction to bring back for a vote, key word, vote at a later date, not now, what is the direction we want to give HR? I mean, do we want, we're recruiting now. I mean, and then go back to the earlier topic, that to Jack's point. How long are we going to push this out, the recruitment, and then pay a consultant or Amber or who, another position because of this? So what do we, do we want room for negotiation or not? I guess it, do we, do we want room for negotiation? If the answer is no, then that goes back to Supervisor Coway's point, 5% or not.
So?
I don't see us making a vote. It's a general question.
Right, no. What you're saying is you would like them to bring back a, for us to vote on, be able to propose that in the recruitment process and that sliding scale.
Correct. Because you're asking for opinion, so my opinion is a sliding scale of negotiation. What would that look like?
Understood.
I don't think it was.
So your, so your recommendation would be to bring, have Judy bring back a sliding scale to, to, for us to vote on for recruitment? That's where you would like to go with it?
Yeah, rather than just a 5%.
I think that's a little more clear. Mr. Toffenely?
Well, yeah, and part of the other conversation, I'm, I'm not, we're already, we can do the class and comp study, and we can hire a person for 123.5 or another 7,000 for 130. The conversation about promising somebody later on, just looking at what's before us with Amador, Tuolumne, and San Joaquin County, they're already going to be coming in. You do this comp study, from what I'm seeing, they're, they start at 130 or even 123. I'm seeing that they're being, coming in above step one at least. What do we tell them? If we hire them at this, and then we do the class and comp, and they're already above one, but their qualifications, I mean, are we promising them they go up to five? So whether we do, we say you got 5% negotiating, or we just bump it up to 130 or not, to me, it doesn't affect the future because they're going to fall within whatever step it comes back as a comp study. Whether they're going to be at three, four, one, they'll still be, I don't think it'll be at the top if we just bump it up 5% or we give her 5% or 10% leeway to negotiate what this comp comes back. What if they're already at step five when it comes back with a comp? If we bump it up and make it 130? We can't promise them anything about anything in the future. Sarah's correct because we don't know what that comp study is going to come back at. All we can do is, at this point, if we're lacking applicants, it could be possibly, All we can do is, at this point, if we're lacking applicants, it could be possibly, we don't have the salary range, where they're looking at other counties that possibly go to 138, 135, 136, that they see that as at least being able to move up stepwise. Here, it's a solid salary, for the time being, what they're being hired into.
So. Judy, let's repeat one more time, what we're proposing a planning director come in at now? 120?
Currently, it is 123,593 annually.
Right. And right now, I'm just going to give you my perspective. Right now, that's a competitive starting point, with, you know, the flat right of Amador being at 114. Opening for Tuolumne, starting salary will be 110, you know, and change. And opening for San Joaquin County, as Mr. Garamendi said, with the population of $750,000, it starts out at 113,558. So, right now, we're starting out at above that. So we, you know, competitively, we have an opening salary of 123,590 something. And that's higher than starting in our surrounding counties, competitively. And bonus for them later, in my, from my perspective, if a class and comp study comes back, and their salary does end up opening up to a higher wage in the future. That's, that's where I stand. I have the questions on some of the numbers, but, you know, I just want to clarify where I stand on this. Right now, I think it's competitive starting salary. Mr. Garamendi?
Yeah, I agree, and I think we ought to recognize that every appointed official in this county is watching this, or going to watch it afterwards, and they're going to ask, why are we pulling out the planning director? And moving them to the front of the line, when we've already agreed to go through a process? We've been told by our professional, who we all hired, that we don't have a pay problem. We were told that this isn't an obstacle, and we've been asked to let the process work through. So I'm not exactly sure what we're doing right now.
So, we're back to a poll. Yeah, Mr. Toffenelli?
I will leave it as is.
I'm for leaving it as is, and proceeding with a class and comp study. Ms. Bollendorf? Ms. Bollendorf concurs? Mr. Garamendi? Ms. Cowalway?
I want to raise it. And we've already agreed to the class and comp study, that's a non-issue.
I think we're clear, Ms. Hawkins. I'm going to double check, I already asked for public comment earlier, right? Ms. Clerk, we had a break in between, I want to make sure I provided everyone an opportunity to talk. Thank you for your time, Ms. Hawkins, thank you for bringing this forward. We have, I think the direction's pretty clear, leave as is right now, and proceed with the class and comp study.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. With that, oh, put my light back on. With that, we'll move on to integrated waste management. Adopt a resolution adopting the Cal Waste 3.23% rate increase for contract year 2021, '22. We have Mr. Feriani here, and we also have a representative of Cal Waste here. Thank you for showing up. You know, it's been quite some time since we've had a representative from Cal Waste show up to one of these meetings, we do appreciate you being here. Mr. Feriani?
Board Chair Supervisor Stopper and Board Members, my name is Paul Feriani, I'm your integrated waste manager. Back in 2016, the board entered into a contract with Cal Waste. It's a 10-year contract, part of that contract is the annual rate adjustment of service rates, and Cal Waste, for this year, this would be the fourth sub- bill, it's 3.23%. I, our neighboring county, Tuolumne County, I don't have any numbers from them, Amador County, depending on the franchise, they're requesting a 12% to 18% rate increase in their franchise areas. The current rate for the standard curbside is 24.69, and that would go up about 80 cents.
80 cents?
80 cents.
So approximately 25.49 for the average curbside rate?
Yeah. We're 24.69 right now, plus 80 cents. Any questions?
Ms. Cowalway?
You said Amador had a what, a 12% in their franchise fee?
They're, they're requesting a 12% to 18%, depending on the franchise area.
But they don't have, they don't have a system like we do.
As far as the parcel fee, or?
Yeah.
No, they do haul out of county, and they don't have a parcel fee.
So is that even a comparison? I mean, we, we can't just arbitrarily change the franchise fee?
No. The reason I, last year, we, I called Tuolumne County, I think they went up anywhere from 4% to 6%, 4% to 9%. Amador County was roughly about 9%. Most of them are higher, Tuolumne and Amador County are higher because they don't have the parcel fee, overall, for curbside.
Well, we have no option, so it's a moot point.
Any further board questions or comments? Would that all move to a public comment?
There is no public comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, I'll entertain a motion. I'll go ahead and move that we accept the recommended rate as per contract. You know, this is just a part of the process moving forward. We, you know, the rates are increased beyond our control. We've had this conversation before as a board, you know, subject that none of us were here when this contract was put forward. And, and, you know, you know, there's reservations on it, but with it, I do want to say that this rate hasn't increased as much as it has been in the past. And I do think that Cal Waste has made movement forward on becoming good partners with the county, and I do appreciate the work that they have done in the recent past to become better partners. So with that, I make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions now, to Rose. Can I have Cal Waste rep come up?
Good morning, I'm.
Thank you, sir.
Jack Fiore, CA on Cowalway.
I do have a couple of questions. My concerns are, and they're the same as last year, and I voted no on this last year, because I have a number of constituents, that COVID has affected a lot. And a lot of elderly people that have a income that is just, it's what it is, single income that's fixed, and because of COVID, everything has gone up, including food prices, and they are struggling big time. And some of them have even done away with your services, and they're getting notifications from code, because people are turning them up for the trash piling up, because they have no way of getting it, they're elderly. We even had today, in our presentation, from our health officer, that if you can't get out to get your vaccination, we will come to your vaccination. So my question is to you, is there any way, if you have elderly customers that are on fixed income over the age of 65, or whatever, that you could possibly, at least for this year, not charge those specific individuals that are in dire need of some type of relief on anything, this increase? Can you look at that? Because there are so many of them that are just struggling right now, and they could end up out on the street, because they're fixed income, they're elderly, they have problems, they can't meet their obligations of what they're supposed to do, even electricity, and so forth. Is there any possibility of that happening?
We've contemplated concepts such as that in other areas. I think we actually talked about it during the, during the development of this contract, not necessarily at the board, but I think with staff. And, and the problem with that, and I guess, maybe I'll answer the question, and then I'll tell you why, I think the answer is no. The problem is, whose responsibility is it to determine who truly is that person versus the person that just doesn't want to pay more? And how long, how do you follow back and reevaluate them? And, and it ends up becoming half of somebody's job, is taking the, a county staff member taking the application after we've developed the process, and determining that, yeah, here's, here's our recent, most recent pay stubs, or absence of pay stubs, and here's what we're spending on groceries, and here's our, all of those kinds of things. PG&E does have a.
They do.
Program, lifeline program, I think it's called? And that is a base, is sort of, could be the basis for a model. But we've, we've never seen it work very well. There's people complaining about the unfairness of it. Wherever you draw the line, somebody's slightly above it, and they, I want to be in, and so, we, I would have to say, I don't know how we would implement that, and so probably the short answer, it's too late for a short answer, is no. And I don't know how we would be able to do that for you.
Well, maybe this is something that can be discussed at integrated waste management, you guys attend those meetings.
Yes, sir.
And maybe we can come up with something during those meetings, I don't know when the next one is.
The nice part is.
Even GAMBE involved, is involved in those meetings, so I, I just feel, because there's, there's a lot of elderly people out there right now, that are well above 65, well above 65, that are trying to survive on 12, $1,400 a month. You know, and they're just very lucky that during their lifetime, that they paid their house off a long time ago, and that's what they have, and they even struggle to pay a fat amount, 12, $1,400 a month, their property taxes twice a year. That's a huge thing to them, because of, you know, everything's, so it's something that I think really needs to be looked at. How it comes about, I don't know. But they are struggling very much out there, so.
I think that you, actually, Calvares County is in a better position than a lot of counties on this issue, because, and you mentioned it yourself, we're, we're an available service, but we're not the only option. You go down, down into the next county, where service is mandatory, and people have to have garbage collection. Here, at least, somebody who opts out of it, or who never did sign up for it, can ask a neighbor to run their, their trash to the transfer station and meet their needs.
That, that happens, and one of the issues is, our Rotary Club, like, May 22nd, Saturday, we're going to one of these homes and cleaning it up.
That's a great idea.
So that, things do happen, but it's not on a regular basis, to where these people can financially be able to help themselves, and so.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your points. Ms. Cowalway?
I will second the motion for one reason only. I think I don't like the contract. I mean, we beat that up last year, or a year before, or whatever. But they have been a good citizen to the community, at least in my district. They have provided bins for nonprofit events, and if my 80 cents goes to help that, I thank them for that. So I will move this item.
Thank, thank you for your second, Ms. Cowalway. You know, one thing before I call for a vote, can I ask you one more question?
Certainly.
You know, it's come up in the past. You know, initially, you had so many people you served in Calvares County. Has that number consistently gone up over the years?
It has consistently gone up, the curve has flattened, as they say, it's not growing like it once did, but we, we add a few accounts every week.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's somewhat flattened out during COVID especially.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That was when it really started.
But you're, but it was raising quite a bit over the first four years of the contract.
First couple, three years, yes.
Yeah, couple, three years, extravagantly, as opposed to the perception that the rates were chasing people away. You were seeing the opposite.
Exactly, we were.
Okay. You know, it's something we've discussed in the past.
Yes.
I was, I was curious, and it was a question that was brought up here at the board level in the past, so I, thank you for that answer.
Yes, sir.
So with that, we have a first and a second. If there's no further questions, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Please, we want to thank you, there are, you know, Ms. Cowalway did bring up, there's quite a few nonprofits you provided bins for, but not only that, you've been involved with the community through a lot of nonprofits, donations, and everything else, and we do appreciate your time with the community in that manner, and we appreciate the, you know, being a good neighbor and a partner.
You're welcome. We plan to continue.
Thank you.
Your program.
We're running tight on time, because we have that 12 o'clock, so I'm going to go ahead and call for lunch. We will have two hours off, we'll come back and do the final item 30, and then, you know, I'm going to say, because the. The event we're having outside goes from 12 to 2, we'll be back here at 2:15. If everyone's okay with that. Mr. Toffenelli?
Are you okay with that?
Ms. Cowalway, do you have anything to say on that? Thank you. Welcome back to the Tuesday Mail On 2021 Regular Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to be moving on to the final item 30, building, conduct a public hearing, adopt the ordinance, chapter 3.53, building department services fees, authorize summary publication of ordinance. At this time, I'll be opening the public meeting. And, Mr. And Mr. Doug Oliver, hearing.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm the Board Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. Bringing before you the second reading of this ordinance. Where essentially I have taken your direction and made changes to the ordinance. In addition, made a couple of other corrections that I wanted to bring to your attention. And then hopefully move this forward for a vote. In the sense there wasn't many changes, I'll just jump right into the ordinance. So we can talk about the information on that. If it will allow me to share a screen. Yes, okay. Okay. So we're looking at is the version before you today. And the changes that you directed me to make first off are contained in Item 22 here. Where we, well, we did add the address assignment, which was in the fee study that I pointed out in the last hearing needed to be included into this, so we included that. And then moving down into the fire prevention fees, what was labeled as business license inspection was modified to say occupancy inspections consistent with the fee study and consistent with the work that we perform. In addition, moving down into Point 020, the, oh, sorry, further down, 030 waiver fees. Item B, we removed the by resolution component from this. So this reads the board supervisors may waive building department fees for additional projects to the extent it can lawfully make a finding that waiving the fees will benefit the public at large. And now in addition, per comments that were made at the last hearing regarding billable hours, I went back and I looked up the billable hours rules. And as it turns out, I had claimed too many billable hours on the FTE calculation. That is my error. And I went back and corrected that. And so what ended up happening is the amount of billable hours available per employee went up. So that essentially did three specific things. And what I'll do is I will share what that did on our fee study. As we're looking at the revenue analysis, you will see that by adding the billable hours, correcting the billable hours in Item 2 above under Staff Resources, those billable hours went up, which means as it calculates, you know, less resources are necessary. So when we apply that to our actual budget for the year, that shows that the amount of budget required goes down slightly. So in doing that, it reduces our hourly rate from what it was, which is 164, down to 139. Rounding down to 139 is standard, implying that across the hourly rates for all of our permit fees means all of our fees went down. And then in addition to that, your board gets to hear me fall my sword and apologize for what I would call a rookie mistake. As far as all of this goes, the fees have been adjusted. The workload has been checked against what is now far better tracking of our workload than there was a year ago, thanks to the new technology that we have. And so we have what I would say the most accurate fee structure that I can possibly bring you with the data I have. At this time, that's really all of the changes that were made. And if there are any questions, let me have it.
Any board questions? Ms. Callaway.
This is maybe more for the board than for Mr. Oliver. But on the fee waiver, normally we have been waiving fees for tax-supported organizations such as veterans groups or fire districts. I was wondering if we wanted to put that in on 030. Mr. Oliver, I don't know your thoughts, but usually every time a non, a tax-supported agency has come to us and we've always approved it.
Well, I would say that, as always, whatever your board desires to have waived within the, you know, context of what is legal, I'm all ears. I don't see anything that, we'd have to make a public benefit finding, I would assume. But that's really Julie's
It's a public benefit.
Yeah, so the board, the board of supervisors has to make a public benefit finding if it's going to essentially approve a below-market fee or below-market rate. And so the reason it was drafted like this is here the board's already made a public benefit finding for any group that's already leasing property at a below-market value. So it didn't make any sense to go back to you again for a fee waiver. And I guess the number of, there's many, there's many organizations that might have tax-exempt status
No, not on Julie.
That don't necessarily provide benefits to the public at large. They might be providing benefits only to a subset of members of the public. So I thought it was a little bit difficult to delegate that on such a broad basis.
Ms. Moss Lewis, it's not tax-exempt. It is tax-supported, such as the fire districts, the veterans districts. Because you can have a tax-exempt, like a church or what have you. But the veterans districts and fire districts, those are the ones that come to mind that continually have come before us and we always have waived the fee. So I just thought.
Sure. So for that, for, if we wanted to maybe just say other public agencies, which these districts would all be, we could add that and then just expand the public benefit finding, you know, to make, to cover those entities. That would be something we could do.
I don't know. I leave, I guess I leave it up to the board. So what if we had, now just to talk against myself, what if we had CCWD do something? It's a public agency and they want an exemption of a building fee. Do we want to do that to CCWD or to the Utica system? I guess I ask the board if Ms. Moss Lewis said it's legal for us to do that. Mr. Stoppa, did you have something you want to say?
Please, I was going to let you finish first, Ms. Callaway. You know, I understand where you're coming from. You know, if there's a public benefit by a water agency, that would fall within the definition that you're talking about. But I'm going to go, you know, there's already certain exemptions as long as it has to do with infrastructure that helps facilitate the use when it comes to buil, building things in certain situations. But with that, I think that changing it to tax-supported would tie our hands. Just for an example, I had brought forward in 2019, a waiver on a nonprofit that was building something that benefited the children in Calvares County. It was Rotary that was putting in an overhead shading structure in the back of area for, for, I forget the exact name of it, but something that was working with the district attorney.
Children Advocacy Center.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. So, you know, that would be an example of something that if we started going down the route of just public agencies, then we would be tying our hands for nonprofits being able to do certain things. Now, we have examples of nonprofits that are leasing county property that would, that do a lot of work that benefits, you know, the public. And I think that just saying that public agencies are the only ones or tax, that, that, that's in the context of the words that I heard you. I believe that would tie our hands to being able to move forward in certain situations where it's a public benefit. And I think public benefit is a better way, and I would prefer personally as one, to keep it the way it's written.
So can I just step in for one second? I just want to remind the board that it's under 35303OB. It's already written that for any organization or applicant that believes a public benefit finding can be made, we can already agendize any of these with the Board of Supervisors on a case-by-case basis. And so just, the only reason why we selected Groups A1 and 2 is because in every case, it's basically self-explanatory. There already would have been a public benefit finding. So I just don't want the board to think that by passing this without any additional language that the board would not be able to waive the fees. They still could. It would just be agendized on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, we're in agreement, Ms. Moss. That's why I'm in agreement of what you have written there as opposed to changing it to tax-supported or public agencies are the only ones we can waive the fees to. As maybe that's not what Ms. Callaway was trying to convey, but that's what I heard.
No.
Maybe I heard wrong.
What, your thing about the nonprofit organizations is already in 030. I wanted to add public agencies. Because the ones that have come before us have pretty much been fire districts and veterans districts. So that as a public agency, which is separate from a nonprofit organization.
Understood.
It's just, you know, it's just
I thought you were talking, replacing the wording with what you proposed.
No, adding in public agencies.
Okay. Then I think that would be already, I mean, you could add public agency, but it would make no changes to what's written there, I believe.
Yes, it would. Because it would be adding. It wouldn't be that it comes to the board under B. So if, if the Jenny Lynn Veterans District wanted something to build, something that needed a building fee, under this, they have to come to the board to get the waiver. I'm saying put Murphy's Fire District, you know, put the veterans districts as public agencies in. Because every time they want to do it, that's a lot of staff time. You know, it's a minimum three, four-week delay. It would be just to add public agencies.
Okay, so you're saying under one or two. I was thinking under B. I understand what you're saying now. My apologies, Ms. Callaway. I get, I get what you're saying. I, you know, I, I have appetite for that. But that would give the billing official more leeway to be able to make the decision without it coming before the board.
We would, if I may, I think it would be important if we do add Item 3 to this for public agencies, that we have a definition of public agency. So that, you know, that there's some clarity. Because I can see that we could add a 3 and say, you know, veterans districts and fire districts, we could do that. Or we could say, if we say public agency, then we would have to define it. And that would, that would add more language, you know, to the ordinance as it is.
I'd be, I'd be fine with that. It's just, they're the ones that have always come. We have never known us ever to deny a permit, not waive a fee for the fire districts and the veterans districts. So maybe we just add them.
Mr. Derrin?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I actually thought a lot about the things that Maria was talking about. I guess, I think, okay, we'll kill veterans district. They've got a project going on down hall. What's it going to cost, permits and all that? And then, and then I, and then I thought about it a little more and said, well, what about CPUD? If they've got a big pipeline to put in? Or CWD wants to build a new administration building? That's, we're still going to be issuing a permit and these things are still going to cost us money. So we just, I'm not opposed to this by any means. I just, we need to account for that this will cost the county money to do this, which might be okay. But we just got to admit it.
Sarah or Julie, when he mentioned CCWD, they claim to be exempt from any of our inspections.
That's not, the issue about whether they're subject to our use permit requirements is a different issue than a ministerial building permit, so.
Yes, I would argue with
There are state definitions that are, that there are in debate there also. So it's, you know, whether it has to do with operations or not is another. Yeah, CPUD also.
Yes, I would argue that the vast majority of the projects that water districts and the like would perform outside of our authority to enforce, you know, local code or, or charge fees for it. So what we're doing here is with the, with the, we, the waiver structure, as it is written, it took one waiver a year down to possibly one every five years, or one every three years. So, I mean, adding an item for projects to be constructed by veteran districts and fire districts would take that down further. Because the only projects that normally are going to be for a fire district is potentially setting up a new firehouse conceivably in the future if population grows or any training facilities that they decided to erect on their property for their, for their staff's use or minor repairs and remodels for their current staffing needs. So these types of things are, it is encouraged that they come to us. And so, you know, waiving that, that fee would be an incentive. Just one less thing that they have to pay for. It sounds like that language might be the best way to go.
Ms. Feldorf, did you have something you want to add to this conversation?
Yeah, I think it's a slippery slope. That was, I understand the intent, but I am hesitant because then the definition of public agency, you know, is now TRIDAM and ACTELAC. Is now Army Corps of Engineers. Is it now New Maloney's? Is it now, I just think that it removes the public aspect of transparency. And I am just a little bit concerned about what it would
We just leave it to, we'd leave it just to fire districts and veterans districts. Not open. Because any others would come under B, that the board would have to waive it.
And I guess I would go back to county council on what liability we would be setting up against ourselves for other agencies to counter that as well.
I do agree that we would, I agree with what Mr. Oliver was saying. We'd want to look for a definition that is specific and, and, you know, in state law for these different types of districts. I mean, the other, I, you know, I just, I did a quick look on public agency and there's different definitions depending on what section, what section of code you're in. So, I mean, we could probably do it on the fly. But it would be safer if we're going to be holding off on final adoption right now to go back and come up with some state-provided language for what constitutes a veterans district or a fire district, to be more careful about it. Alternatively, I don't know if the board has any interest in just, since right now still a fire district or veterans district would have the ability to go to the board and ask for a fee waiver if the board would be content to adopt it as is. And then if we come back for changes later and they just, you know, that, what all it buys really is, is a time, it saves a little bit of time, but there doesn't have to be an application directly to the board. But again, these different organizations like fire districts and veterans districts right now under the current ordinance could, could be agendized for a fee waiver at any point. So I don't know if it's important enough to the board to hold off on adopting the fee study so that we can change it, or whether the board might want to just consider the, you know, adding some additional permanent categories later on.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and approve it with the understanding that we'll come back back with a 3, which, under an A3, which would be for veterans districts and fire districts.
Is, Mr. Chair, is there any reason we can't just, I mean, I've come around, I would agree that would be...
Uh, you know, she, and I think, I think it's somewhat diff, when Marita reeled it back to fire districts and veterans districts, for the most part, I mean, I would add one thing, and I'll get to that in a second, for the most part, is that defined in itself. Um, with that, I would say veterans districts and fire districts exclusive to Calaveras County. You know, I, you know, other than that, that's...
Yeah, I don't think we need to add that. We just have item number 3 under A. If we have 1 and 2, add 3, but fire districts and veterans district, I would support that.
I would support that, yeah. I, I think that excludes a lot of the concerns that Ms. Feldorf brought up, you know, with a slippery slope. And, uh, I would support that. I think it's almost defined in itself, veterans districts and fire districts.
So there's such thing as a veterans memorial district? Is that different than a veterans district?
Okay.
That's what it is. I would recommend that it be veterans memorial district and fire districts as defined by state law.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so, so if I'm hearing this correctly, uh, item 3, uh, let's see, um, 3.5, 3.030, item A, we are going to add a 3 that states projects to be constructed by veterans memorial districts and fire districts as defined by state law.
I have one other change to, um, recommend that goes along with that in the finding section. So finding number 3, um, in the third line, uh, second and third lines, it says, when the applicant is proposing to construct its project on county-owned property and the applicant is either the county itself, or an organization that has successfully secured a below-market lease or license pursuant to a finding of public benefit made by the Board of Supervisors. And I would add similarly, a project being developed by a veterans memorial district or a fire district is clear, is by definition a project that would benefit the public at large.
I, I, I mostly agree with you, Julie. We also have to think about the sentence in there that says, uh, let me read, I, it's hard for me to read it. Uh, is it either the county itself or organizations? Is this, is this, uh, is this say on county property specifically? Because are all those memorial districts, veterans memorial districts and fire districts on county property?
Yeah, I think I put it in the wrong place. I'm sort of doing this on the fly, so forgive the sloppiness. I think we just add the number 3 like you suggested. And then at the very end of the finding, um, for number 3, um, I would just add a completely new sentence that just says, um, fire, fire districts and veterans memorial districts are by definition, um, agencies whose buildings serve the project at large.
Mr. Toffenelley?
I'm sorry, the public at large.
Mr. Toffenelley?
Okay, I'm going to, um, disagree on stating memorial districts. The VFW post here in San Andres has property and they have a building on it. They're not a memorial district, they're a VFW district, but yet they're veterans. And you're excluding them by putting that language in there. Um, and you're excluding certain veterans that have post 102 and, uh, so there's only two memorial districts that I know of. One's in Copper and one's in the Valley Springs area. And one in Moke Hill, 3, excuse me. But there are like a VFW post here and some other things that are going on. So if you're going to exclude all, certain veterans, I don't think it's, it's right. I, I think if they, they want to, if VFW here wants to expand or put something out back down below that they need a permit for, uh, they should be included. They're, they're all vets. Just my observation.
So my suggestion is that we add a sentence to finding 3 to make sure that we're capturing whatever new organizations we are adding to the ordinance for automatic, uh, public benefit findings for automatic fee waivers. We just want to have a sentence added, um, that states that these organizations, um, are for the benefit of the public. And there's leeway with how we write that, but that, the goal, we're supposed to make a public benefit finding before delegating the authority to that to waive these fees.
I, I, I would concur with you on the change to the finding 3, Julie. We just have to iron out the, uh, the, the, the statement of veterans memorial district as to any veteran, any type of veterans district as defined by state law, I think. Something to that end.
Yeah. I, I, I agree, and Gary brought up a very good point about this. And I, and this goes to, I think, Amanda's point earlier about the slippery slope. So, uh, VFW, American Legion, you know, and then, you know, Jack Garamendi's 501(c)(3) for veterans. We, I don't know, I mean, I think we better be pretty specific. And that's going to be really hard, because we've got a lot of good veterans organizations in this county.
Do, do we want to...
I don't know.
Possibly...
I don't know.
Here's my suggestion. Let's reel this back for a second. These are all good suggestions, not that I don't want to do them. I think we need to define that. I think we're getting outside the purview of, you know, having to repost this. So do we want to go ahead and work forward with what we have here and, and direct staff to bring back something with changes in the future?
I, I would agree. I think we need to more define it. Uh, the memorial district cuts out a lot. If we can redefine it and have it brought back, I mean, we can approve what we have today here today. And it's not cutting any of the fire districts out or any of the vets districts out by doing, approving what we have before us today. Um, thank you. They can always, if, if between now and the time we bring this back and refine what exactly we're talking about, they can always come before the board and have a fees waived. So we're not just cutting them out. But I, I'd hate to cut somebody out simply by saying memorial district when there, there's other vets districts in this, in this county that, um, own property and have buildings on them that may be wanting to do renovations or additions or so forth, that if we're going to exclude those, then we need to do what we can for all of them. So I would support just moving what we have with, having, and approve what we have in front of us today with no changes, and then with the idea that the staff can redefine and bring it back at some other time in the future.
I would concur. Any...
I did.
Ms. Coway?
Is the VFW and all those post taxpayer-supported agencies like the veterans memorial districts are?
Um, that, I'm not sure. I, I don't, I know the, the districts are...
The districts are, which is why...
You're correct on that, Marita. That, that's true. Um, but does it make the VFWs any...
No, but they're no, they're similar to what might be any other nonprofit that comes, which would fall under B, um, where the veterans districts and the memorial districts and the fire districts are taxpayer-supported organizations. And that's why I felt that they should be included, not have to come to the board. VFW or the post or the Murphy's Friends or whatever are, are all nonprofits that all have the opportunity to come, you know, so...
I, I understand what you're saying.
So I just thought, let's just include them.
I mean, you make a good point, but, but the same thing, I, I feel that we're cutting out a certain part, along with what Amanda was trying to point out, a slippery slope.
So then we just let everybody just have to come. And, and like, historically, we have never turned down...
No.
The taxpayer, fire districts or memorial districts, nor the others.
We've never turned down Habitat for Humanity.
Correct.
We've never turned down...
So we're not adding them. That's why I picked those two, because they're taxpayer-supported. Anything other, whether it's Habitat or VFW or the whatever, the Moose Lodge or the whatever, all fall under B. They can all come to us. If we start adding, well, we're just going to do veterans and they all get to do it, then Garamendi's Veteran Club would be included. And then we go down the slippery slope. This way it's very specific to taxpayers, to taxpayer-supported groups.
Yeah, Garamendi's group meets every Saturday night out at the barn.
Yeah. Right.
It's a moving...
I, I, you make a good point. I, I understand where you were coming from. I, I was just, are, are we, I, I, I mean, if the rest of the board is going for it, then that's fine. I understand. And you make a valid point, you certainly do.
I think you make a valid point. I think that, uh, I would prefer to give our council more time to delve into it. Just make sure all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
Well, I don't, I meant, you know, if we're just, I'm trying not to be bureaucratic and go with what we've historically know we've always done for the reason that they're taxpayer-supported. So I would move that we approve this, adding A3, that, um, the fire districts, taxpayer-supported fire districts and veterans memorial districts are included and let the building official. Everyone else would fall under B.
I would, can I just quickly say, I would, I think when you say taxpayer, um, supported districts, that's a very broad category. There's a lot of different organizations that might be, the taxpayer dollars might be contributing to, whether or not every one of those creates a general public benefit is hard to state. So certainly with veterans memorial districts and with, um, federal districts, those by definition serve the public at large. I guess I would just caution the board about creating an overbroad definition because it's not clear that that's a duty you can delegate to the building official if the organizations and their purpose are undefined.
So can we then just say, um, the waiver would apply to under A3, not B, to veterans memorial districts and Calaveras fire districts?
Yes, those are easily, those are by definition, those, I think, yes, the answer is yes. And I would recommend adding a sentence if you do that, um, at the end of finding 3 that we can craft together, just stating that by definition, those two types of districts serve the public at large. Their buildings serve the public at large.
Got it. Fine with me.
Mr. Garamini, do you agree with that?
I want to hear the rest of the discussion.
Ms. Feldorf, do you agree with that? Light, microphone, please.
No, because some of these fire districts fall within a different jurisdiction with those require the building permit. Alcoville, New Maloney's, the Veterans Charred Angels Camp. So now I, my district being in overlap with a city jurisdiction, I can't support that to force the city...
You're not. It wouldn't apply to the city, only to those...
Yes, but this is setting precedent to put pressure on the city to follow the, the county ordinance when it comes to argument.
Understood, Chair, no. Mr. Toffenelley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I would support it in the idea that I, I would spend some time with county council and the building department to maybe do a revision on this at a later date, um, and more defined. But if, if we're going to get a vote to, to exempt, have an item 3 for veterans memorial districts and fire districts within Calaveras County as such, then I would support that at this time. Again, with possibly bringing it back after some time of county council and the building department to redefine some of the other districts that are out there that, um, are along the same lines. I, I just, you know, it's difficult, and I'm trying to do my duty to the vets and the veterans that, um, I've been involved with for many years. Um, I feel like I'm drawing a line, but I understand what Marita is saying as far as public funds supporting those memorial districts and fire districts versus some of the other areas. So that's where I am at this point.
Can I offer a third option? Um, well, if we want to move this through fast, what I'm hearing is the board has an interest to get this approved. Um, it takes me approximately six hours to prep one of these items to the board as soon as someone sends me a letter saying that they want to have these fees waived. Um, it could be that we could retain the language as it is and your board could give me specific direction to automatically offer the option of waiving the fees to any of these organizations. And then I can bring it to your board as soon as they come in with a project, which amounts to maybe once every five years. But I could, I could receive specific direction and move forward that way. And that would, you know, prevent us, uh, from having to do any last-minute changes to the ordinance.
So what you're saying is you're going to be with us for at least five more years, Mr. Oliver?
At least nine. All in hard tax and lightning strikes, you know?
This is recorded.
My word is my bond.
I'll go with, I'll go with Gary and Marita.
I'm also with Ms. Coway. Mostly with Gary.
Well, there's a big difference between what Supervisor Toffenelli said and what I said.
I said with you, mostly with...
Well, it's, you know, you're either in or you're out. So either you're supporting Mr. Toffenelli's position or you're supporting mine.
Are you being facetious or something?
No, I'm being honest.
Okay, I don't understand the difference.
I made, I made, Gary, Mr. Toffenelli wanted to bring this back at a later time. It just...
He said...
I wanted to add 3 now, not 2.
No.
I wanted to add the veterans districts and the fire districts now as one that the building official can waive.
I agreed with that.
But I thought you said you wanted it back.
I said, and anybody can bring an ordinance back, workers have to bring an ordinance back. And that's what I wanted to do. I was just making a statement.
This one?
I will, I will agree with you on this, passing it today with an item 3, with veterans memorial districts and fire districts. But again, I was just making a statement. So the other veterans that are out there hearing this, that I will work with staff at some time to read, get the verbiage correct and bring it back to this board at some time. I will work with county council and the building department, um, for those, to, to get some language that defines, um, what we're looking for. But for right now, I would agree with you and add an item 3.
Thank you. I got misunderstood.
My, my statement stands, and I'll finish what I was saying. Adding number 3 and all... also incorporating what Ms. Julie Moss Lewis said and adding to, I believe it's finding number three, Ms. Moss Lewis?
Yes, it would just be one sentence.
And the sentence that she had said, that would also be part of the amendment that I would bring forward with adding the number three to A in 3.53.030. I think that that would cover our basis.
That makes the finding. You can't move without.
Right. So yes, Marita?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Garamidi, yes. Toffenelley?
Yes.
Fuldorff?
Yes.
Yes. That's five yeses to making that, that change right there, right now. Raise that go.
Mr. Oliver, are you, are you ready to add as, as you go? Or do you want to?
I can do that right here, I hope, but I'm just, new technology for you. Let's try it out.
And Julie?
Yes.
Text him over the verbiage for the end of finding number three. So he can add, incorporate that in there right now also.
Yeah, maybe when Mr. Oliver finishes this.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, can we table this item while they're doing that, move on to supervisor's announcements to give them time to do that and then come back?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay. We're going to table this for the moment. Do, Ms. Edwards, do I have to close any public hearing or anything to be able to table this for the moment?
Uh, I, I don't believe this is a public hearing. Oh.
It was, it was written down as such, so I went ahead.
You're right. Um.
I can have this done in 10 seconds. I just need Julie to topple that right.
Okay.
I can do it right now. Projects built by Veterans Memorial Districts and Fire Districts by definition. You don't need those commas, but anyway.
I'll second you.
Benefit the public at large.
Done.
Any further board comments or questions to what we had before us at this time? With that, let's please move on to public comment. Madam Clerk.
There's no public comment on this item.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And is there any further comments by the board? Or do we have a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
There's a motion on the table.
As amended?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Cowley. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Passes on a four one vote of the board.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Supervisors' announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and make other announcements or report out. Mr. Garamidi.
Thank you. We have a, I have a.
Microphone.
Thank you. We have a RCRC Executive Committee meeting tomorrow. As you're all aware, there's a lot going on in the state legislature and federal dollars. Hopefully, we'll get a report out on how that's looking for us. As Chris noted, there's a lot of pages of details that need to be sorted out. So as soon as RCRC releases sort of their summary of what the rules are going to be, I'll make sure it gets circulated to everybody here via the CAO to make sure that we're on the same page. Because, you know, there's a lot of concern that a lot of the money that's being sent here, including part of that eight million, we may not be able to use. And so we haven't read the rules yet. And so we'll take a hard look at that. In addition, there's a, you know, there's a camera meeting on Thursday, the Calaveras Amador McCallum River Association. And we'll be talking about Sigma. Hopefully, Supervisor Fuldorff will be able to join me. And we'll all get a little more informed as how Sigma is impacting the McCallum side of the river versus Stanislaus too. So we'll report out and hopefully we'll learn some good things this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garamidi. Ms. Cowley?
Mr. Toffenelley and I have a LAFCO meeting on Monday. I'll be taking the Piat Public Information Officer for Caltrans on a tour of Ebbets Pass tomorrow. I'm taking a frog jump team to the fair on Thursday. Under Common Ground, we've delivered about 24,000 home delivered meals last year and about 4,300 congregant site meals. And I want to just push the book, which I'm not sure you can buy, The Road Back, which was written stories and poems by students, faculty, the Balaceto School District. I just want to read one thing. As a student, of course, they have, we're doing virtual learning. I'm doing the same thing. Every day is boring. Every day feels like the movie Groundhog Day. Why, you ask? Not only is it boring, coronavirus feels like a torture. The routines were done, were spent on homework mostly. I mean, this is just an example of some of the things, these are students, what they wrote. These are one through K, one through eighth grade. Coronavirus is still a nightmare. This is last line. It was pretty exciting to read that.
Thank you, Ms. Cowley. And, you know, that, sharing that, that's, you know, touches the heart to what a lot of our students are going through.
Yeah.
Many of us are aware through different channels. And then I want to go back to your Common Grounds and meals delivered and everything. Those are impressive numbers. And I definitely like hearing about that. You know, Common Grounds is a great asset to our community and something, to hear those actual numbers are impressive, how many have been delivered and everything. So thank you. Mr. Toffenelley?
Yes, Cowley and I have a meeting on Monday.
Your, your mic.
Sorry.
Cowley and I have a LAFCO meeting on Monday. I also have a Mountain Valley MS meeting this Friday at 10:00 a.m. That'll happen.
I have a bunch of meetings coming up. I won't talk about those, but I will talk about what we did this, the May 1st, Saturday. We had a very successful kids fishing day in Murphy's Park. I cooked 150 dogs and gave out chips and drinks. It was phenomenal. Great. The planning was good. I think 99% of those children had a successful day in catching the fish. I was impressive with the plants that were put in. Very large fish. And I want to thank Supervisor Cowley and Supervisor Garamidi for stopping by and getting a dog and, you know, saying hi to the kids that were, that were there that day. That was, it was a good day and it was very successful. We had the largest amount assigned in for it that we've had in the past. And everyone had missed it the prior year because of everything we went through with COVID. So good input from the community. Ms. Fuldorff?
I attended CAG with Supervisor Toffenelley last week and after CAG was over, attended the last segment. They were wrapping up the homecoming kickoff out at the fairgrounds. And then also the family medical center down in Copper is relocating to Town Square. So they finalized the renovations and they're moving, moving there. So I have.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. One other thing is, sorry, North Calaveras. I conceded the trophy for, between mayor and chair, to Mr. Alvin Brolio, who jumped a very good game this year. Sorry. You'll have a wonderful day and thank you. This adjourns the board supervisors meeting for today.
Oh, sorry, we're going back into closed session.
We are going into closed session. My apologies. I just.